Hey, good evening, folks. We'll get started. All the meetings of the planning board and public hearings are ordered Tuesday, November 28th at 6:08 PM. Tom Malazek, Chair, President in the on foreign, Sue Lyman, and Jim Harwood, Member President via Zoom, and Eber. I have to read the notice of public hearing. Now, when explaining for a notice of public hearing, noted by Jim and the one explaining for a whole public hearing in accordance with Mass General law, chapter forty A. Section five, and the topic of this wireless communication facility zoning by law being considered as special town meeting scheduled for December 8th to 2022. Public hearing will be held in person in the county hall located in six water street, Monticano, Massachusetts, and via Zoom on November 29th at 6:00 PM. Zoom meeting may need a higher drop, but we hope for at least forty-eight hours of advanced hearing. With that, we'll get started. So we're gonna go through. So we've got the presentation up on the screen here. So I just read the public, the notice of public hearing. And we'll go ahead and write into the meeting outline. So we're gonna cover the town meeting, one article, and some other data and graphs and diagrams. Key takeaways. We'll do the presentation of the bylaw itself. And then we're actually, we're gonna reverse correspondence and public comment. We'll do public comment first. And then I think because of the volume of correspondence that we have, we'd be here until tomorrow morning if we were to read it all. So it's, we have it all here. Members of the planning board have read, we've read all the correspondence that's come in over the last fifteen months that we've been doing this. So it's all available for the public to commit and view. For a discussion and then, and then we'll appear.
Do you have questions after your presentation? Can we ask them?
No, wait until public comment. So like I said in the past meeting, you know, during the discussion, the reading presentation, if a question comes to mind, write it down. And in a public comment, you approach the podium and then ask your question at that time. It makes it expedient that way. I saw you shaking your head. And it just makes it, no, I'm not getting into back and forth, alright? The chair is in control of the meeting. And if the chair doesn't recognize you, you cannot speak. If you want to sit, it will be removed from the meeting. I'm not gonna get, let this get into a crazy mess.
Sometimes the questions get answered anyway.
True, right. Sometimes during the course of the presentation, that question gets answered anyhow. So Article ten, special town meeting, scheduled for Thursday, December eighth, twenty twenty-two, seven PM, at the Duffin Theater, Monticano High School. Article ten, to see if the town votes a men's zoning by law by deleting section ten point three, wireless telecommunications overlay district. They're replacing it with a new section, eight point one eight, wireless communications facilities, that is set out in the end in a handout on the in substantially the same form as the discussion of the planning board, November twenty ninth, twenty twenty-two, public hearing, or take any other action in relation there to two-thirds vote is required. And then, and then approved by the planning. Excellent.
Okay, hi. So I'm working on it. It's, we're just trying to figure out all those different. Could you please speak up so everyone can hear?
I can't read that. I can't understand it. I can't see it.
Why?
We actually make it from five minutes.
There shouldn't be a full screen.
Yeah.
Did you realize that was on?
We're working on it.
We're working on it. But no one proposed to display samples.
So write it, write it so it's self. Is it better?
Good.
Yeah, it's better, but it seems like it.
That's about as big as we can make it with the projector.
If you raise your hands, if you would like a printed copy to read along at your own seat for the rest of the day. Raise your hand tall. Okay. You still can't hear me even with my microphone. Would you like a printed copy of the powerpoint presentation? Okay, raise your hand so we can count. Okay, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven.
And we have one here.
We have some up.
It's more even in this whole area. But this
I have song. I'm just I have a case to open, but we can do that.
So we have a couple of other long hearings that should share that. Maybe you guys can share that. Do it really?
No, no, let's just keep going. Right, I'll give somebody mine so you don't have to.
Well, also, those are recording of this hearing and the site will be available on the Lennox, the town of Lennox website tomorrow along with the site. So when we enter, you will have that as well. And then you'll all look over your own part. So I just wanted to give a summary of the planning process that the town went into to develop this new zoning by law. The current wireless communication zoning by law in Lennox only allows for wireless infrastructure in five boroughs in the community. And around before twenty twenty, the town released complaints that not in the personal coverage. There are people in every neighborhood with legs. If the town wanted to address that, so we began to look at other communities' bylaws and we engaged an outside expert that had been working with an outside expert in really this twenty twenty to develop a zoning by law that would be expansive and permit wireless infrastructure all throughout Lennox in trying to make it possible for carriers to cite new infrastructure in a community to provide a universal wireless coverage in all of the city's neighborhoods. Through this planning project, the Navy Board identified site and property looked at multiple zoning bylaws from the town, but really all over the northeast too and around the country. Looked at existing coverage conditions. Our consultant did a hundred miles of drive test throughout the community. And really looked at where are the pressure points in Lennox, where do we have the most people and the least amount of coverage? And where are there areas that we need to resolve and can resolve this coverage gap? We looked at various setback movements. The zoning by law has been reviewed by our town council, who works for communities and counties that have brought them to Shippensburg. And it only works for municipalities. It's been a very open and positive process. And they've been helpful in providing for the community. And I would say they've always been part of the discussion and discussion to take into consideration different ideas and concepts that have been brought forward. But really, the takeaway I think is the town wanted a zoning by law that would better represent the community from a siteing or non-leverable infrastructure placement in siteing in our current bylaw to do a better job. Our current bylaw does not do the best job it can do. So we want the ability to say yes to well-sighted infrastructure that will improve coverage, and we want the ability to say no as in any compliance with federal law and propose by law that will support that second time we have to do that. So this is an example of some of the setback coming that, okay, we're in fact in to consider what kind of setback or buffer to buy residential properties within the town. And it's sort of back to the idea of pressure points or reach points because we have the drag testing provision invited by our consultant. We have some additional paths that so very few of these are covered. But we also wanted to give our hand in the balance and protect the residential character of our neighborhood and property in Lennox. So they look at a hundred foot buffer, which means in the north area in the community, there are a new tower, fifty-four. It's measured fifty-four factors, which means, you know, as the buffer, when you guys dig it, you'll see the remaining space get smaller. And this is something that we're trying to resolve in the current zoning by law. Kind of you don't want your zoning by law to be construed as preventing the co-stainer community. And they'll probably be really wanting to work that bread and sort of response that that really substantial setbacks. And then they'll show you the five hundred foot buffer. And we also had a one thousand six hundred and forty foot structural buffer suggested. And you'll note this really what is new, exciting of a structure in both of the town. But I think there's really a set of takeaways that we over-approach will need from today's year in front of the new zoning by law. The current ordinance, the remaining script in Lennox, only five hundred and five hundred car lengths. Along with seven and twenty-four, you definitely include a relevant level of careful. The new zoning by law will need to play a federal role. It does not give a during, it's a permitting, the provision of wireless in Lennox. It requires a lot of information that has to be provided to the town during the permanent process. And I think it's also from the beginning, it's important to know that there has been some misinformation going around. This zoning by law to not allow most sectors to entitle the community. It won't even allow them in the part of the key. The articles and names are not included. It won't get a map in our presentation. It will allow, and it will permanently happen. And then seeing the script, the articles needed and the hardware, the main script are represented probably within the first. So our first, uh, five things, so there will be a lot of information provided and a lot of review and prepare something. Analysis of the town that for, to show what's like what the infrastructure role. And instead of, for a typical permanent application, we notify the voters and the voters, the voters who did the three hundred feet. This will notify everyone with a six hundred feet of the subject property. And the zoning board will be provided to hire wireless infrastructure consultants to help review the application. And then there will be opportunity for public input at the time. And really, every new instance of a wireless infrastructure in the zoning by law will go forward and study for with a public hearing process. So that's really important, but and there is more voters. And now we go through the zoning by law, section by seven. So this is also available on the website. And we'll have copies being handed out as soon as they so people can learn the copy in the third part. So we really want to make sure everyone knows anything about
sort of apply to what the existing zoning by law probably wouldn't stand up in court to a complaint, so. That's something to do this for.
That is correct. Okay, so what Jim just stated and Glenn alluded to, and I'll reinforce, is that the existing bylaw, because it only, because it restricts the placement of wireless facilities, only five specific cars in the town. And those five cars are all along Route seven twenty-four, right in the vicinity of the Mankau desert building. So that the only cluster is now like there are five cars scattered evenly throughout town. Five one can scatter in one or two up near the Mankau building. That has the, that can be seen as an effective prohibition. So under a federal law, federal laws state, you cannot prohibit or have the effect of prohibiting provisions for personal wireless services in a municipality. And because of that stipulation in the previous bylaw, that could be construed, more likely will be construed as an effective prohibition. Go on to eight point one eight, point one, purpose. Purpose of the bylaw is to establish general guidelines for the location of wireless communication facilities, including without limitation, wireless communication towers, antenna, ground equipment, completed accessory structure. So basically, the intent is to accommodate, grow and manage the wireless services, establish a thorough review process to ensure compliance in that application or act upon within a reasonable period of time. Minimize the impact on surrounding land by establishing standards for location compatibility, encourage displacement on existing wireless communication facilities and water structure. Respond to implied policies embodied in the Public Communications Act of nineteen ninety-six, and protect the town's character while meeting the needs of the citizens to act at the heart of the service. Eight point one eight, I mean, true, we have applications and permits required. Those are little second, I'm not gonna read it for pay, but it simply states that a special permit is required to be installations and administrative approval process prior modification to exist in and that an application must be completed and submitted. And there's also a B scheduled as well. So the other note that I'll make at the bottom of the slide is that the special permit process is also detailed under our existing bylaw on section three point four. And there's also a rigorous set of requirements in that section. So next is our, is the use table. So on the right is a little kind of a breakdown of what all the towns are. We refer to them back and forth as, you know, our three A, our one A, we know that we deal in all the time, so. The table left to right is our three A, one A, our thirty, then on the commercial, three rental town, the industrial. B and A means order of appeal. That means that a special permit is required and the zoning board of appeal. No, of course, and not allowed. No, that there are no yeses. There are no by right uses for wireless communications. Everything is via a special permit, and the mic just died. So on the right, so the three A, designate a residential district, three A minimum. So it's basically all the large parcels on the west side of town, basically from under Mount Road to the town ward. On the east side of town, Rory Brook Road, near October Mountain, to the town ward. The R one A district is basically most all of the parcels throughout the town with the exception of all the other smaller districts. Our thirty means residential zone, thirty dollars, where a book minimum lots are. And the neighborhood roughly bordered by Sunset Ave, Yoga Ave, Green Street, Main Street. And as on the map, it's denoted in the little orange kind of rectangle, L-shaped figure on the map. Our fifteen residential, fifteen thousand, where a book minimum property that's roughly parcelled, ordered by Main Street, the Bay Ave, Puthonice Street, Park Water. Also, the parcelled order by West Street, we're now at Sunset Ave, Main Street. And also the neighborhood of Lennox. And then on the map, it's denoted by the yellow, the bright yellow. Commercial C is basically the downtown village and parcelled east of Crystal Street in Lenoxdale, roughly Brown Street, that's where we were at, Lenox. C one A is the commercial, C one A and C three A are one A minimum, three A minimum, mermaid parcels. And they're all along Route seven twenty-four. Basically, a thirteen hundred foot wide strip and a two thousand foot wide strip from East Dougway Road all the way to the fifth and fourth. And the I industrial town is in the area of Crystal Land along Willow Creek Road, Bristol Street, down here Lenoxdale, the old land, the old Brown Street, also the old Nagger Mills. And the I zone is filled in purple for the lower right of the map. Well, section eighty point one eight point three, termination of need. So advocates must demonstrate that a new wireless communication facility is needed to provide coverage, coverage via mapping and accompanying their if the new wireless communication facility is in the span of capacity, the advocate must demonstrate quantitatively that there would be to use all. Number two, the advocate must demonstrate several alternatives that will lessen the impact on the given number five, the CBA must also apply to demonstrate need or approving any adaptation. Number four, if an advocate finds a certain right, they must provide a free ballot, develop a blog, and understand that they will provide a substantial evidence. Yeah, just flip the slide. What is it? Section eight. Three. Well, that's it, it's all in there. So it is yeah, qualitative criteria, well, the two slide. So on this slide, this shows qualitative criteria that are required. So the selection of location of the facility shall conform to the following qualitative criteria. Now, I remember this was a couple of days ago. So new personal wireless service facilities shall not have an undue adverse impact on historic records that seem to use residential property values or natural, man-made resources. Ideally, a new wireless communication facility should be located on an existing non-residential structure, included in existing power. Preferred locations, reach new power along the vertical industrial corridor or the suitable individual location for other wildlife park sites. Or setting another structure that is intended to use already in place more compatible with the industrial nature of wireless facilities. Remote locations on earth as an unimpelated area can be acceptable if the result is a new tower that is generally not visible to public. While setback requirements are included in the bylaw, it is preferred that new power be located as far from residential line as possible to avoid detrimental visually fast and adversely affecting property values and to preserve the privacy of joint property. New towers may be acceptable when they do not diminish the quality of experienced land affected by years of bias, scenic, and historic skyline that one duly compromised and booked the traditional land development and use. Then there's a whole set of quantitative criteria as well. So these are, these are the preferences. So the first preference is a concealed co-location on a non-residential structure or attachment to this existing tower. Second preference is a camouflaged co-location. Third preference, co-location on a non-residential structure except for standard change their building-based actual tower that's not concealed. Fourth reference is a substantial change to existing base tower or tower. And also a new cam block or concealed tower. Fifth preference is a new tower. And we have a sixth preference, co-location on a residential structure in the land we own. In addition to foregoing of any new power or any co-location on a residential structure, through the advocate must demonstrate that it does not be the more effective to locate their facility on an existing power or non-residential structure. Next. Co-locations. So these are just three, three basic points for co-locations. Antenna setback and antenna array, attaching any structure that is not a tower, except for the setback requirement, although it is a much bigger structure lower. There's also a five-foot horizontal dimension that you're allowed to put your antenna from the side of the structure. As long as it doesn't corrode on the joint parcel. The top, number two, height extension, top of an antenna, cabin antenna shall not extend more than fifteen feet above the structure other than a tower which is attached. And then number three, standing and pole extensions, additional height may be allowed on power transmitting stand from the utility pole to accommodate minimum safety separation of the current electrical line as required by the end of the season. And utility provided for the purposes of planifying an application with replacement of existing utility poles. A replacement pole of five meter greater height above ground, including the tablet, is considered replacement pole or the subject of co-locating requirement of the bylaws. Now, at this point, I'll just, I'll point out, even though this section here, we're gonna talk about utility poles. This bylaw does not in any way regulate any kind of wireless communications facility placement within the town, within public right of way. There's a whole set of regulations that will be handled later on and will most likely be not a zoning by law, but sort of Reagan tower that's for town by law. So the example is the small wireless facility that's on the utility pole down a rectangle that will be in the public right of way that's not located on a private property. So second So second slide, uh, eight point one, eight point six, new towers. So here's the section where we have the mail notice to neighbors. Uh, so or send, the applicant is required to send notification to all of us within six hundred feet of property subject to the application. And most everything in, in throughout the bylaw is distances from property lot, not distances from existing structure. So the setback is the, for a running setback, structure is usually going to end up in four. Depending on the size of the part of it. The height limitations, um, in going through this, we didn't set an absolute height limitation. Um, so we say new tower cannot exceed the minimum height necessary to provide adequate coverage for the personal wireless, wireless service facility proposed for the use of the tower. And working with the applicant to determine who height is only worth, instead of following a part of the scheduling part of the process. Uh, balancing test, uh. And then zoning board may allow height greater than the allowable height. If certain height is not to really increase impact or. And what we found going through this whole process is that. The tower will really only even be as high as they need to be, and then most gave the bet, you know, above the tree. Um. Providers aren't going to build a cell power higher than they need to. Because it's also prohibitive to do so. Uh, so new towers. Okay, that's the setbacks, new freestanding towers shall be subject to setbacks described below. The minimum setback distance to the nearest residential property line should be two hundred and fifty feet. So as you saw on the mapping that we showed earlier, I know it was kind of hard to see. Uh, but when we went through that exercise, two hundred and fifty foot setback. Basically disallowed placement of towers in the residential zone. Uh, in the, in the densely populated part of town, anywhere where there's cars, it's pretty small. And that two hundred and fifty foot setback just, you know, doesn't weigh, disallowed. Uh, so really a new tower, it basically pushes them into the areas where, where you're more, so when you. In the outskirts of the R one A, there are holes in the R one A where you can potentially put a tower. Or where there's, you know, the, uh, the space opens up for it. But also in most of the neighborhoods, they're densely populated. The two hundred and fifty foot setback disallows. But further on, as far as this special permit process, zoning board by super majority vote may reduce the setback. In eleven, one and a half times the power height, based on the following finding. A, does not materially increase the impact of a broken tower on surrounding in comparison to satisfying a full setback. Or B, there is no viable location on any part of the subject area from which to provide a necessary service that would comply with the full setback. Or C, as a result of the design, is fully compatible with the purpose and intent of the bylaw. And number two, in the C one A and C three A and industrial zones, the minimum setback particles should be equal to the height of the tower. And the zoning board, you know, can also allow a shorter setback if it provides greater safety and aesthetic. So the second, eight point one, eight point seven, uh, provided for a whole load of, uh, design criteria. Actually eleven of them. So one is, uh, they cannot significantly impact future views from nearby location, should be architectically compatible with respect to some views. Monhole tower design should prefer over lattice guided towers. Concealment or camouflage of the use inappropriate for mitigating visual impact. And then there's several, uh, examples. A uni-pole, uh, mimic manmade or natural object, uh, the thing we refer to with the bad, the frankenpines. The, the faux pine tree was kind of massive, it's held out. Uh, field light stations for athletic and recreational facilities or to develop our area. 钟塔，it's room and amp holder. Uh. Fire watch tower for a modern pine tree. Landscaping of existing vegetation shall be employed to minimize visual impact. Antennas, cables, associated equipment, mounting apparatus should be enclosed, concealed, and screened. Uh, signage, commercial message, messages shall not be displayed on any wireless communication facility. Uh, required non-internal signage shall be restricted to FCT and header structure registration number. When required, information about the facility owner, operator, and any additional security and or safety data. Uh, lighting should be prohibited, uh, unless required by the FAA. Uh, and then applicants shall demonstrate efforts to avoid FAA lighting requirements. But to reduce power height for alternative location. So if lighting ends up being required, then night lighting shall be red and void. Low as practical beam spread toward the area. And then noise, number eight, the sound levels contributed by the facility operation, including generators, shall not exceed forty decibel property lining of the parcel containing the WCF. And operations with no generator running shall not exceed thirty dB, as said property lining. And routine generator tests should be limited between eighty-five, PAM and five PM on business days. That's why I was. Number ten, a hook behind mounting cabinets and practical pole equipment cabinet should be installed inside existing structures. If installed outdoor, the equipment should not be visible to public, neighbors, or be screened behind an architecturally appropriate clothing. Behind a screen on a rooftop or on the ground land in greenings as required. Um, and then number eleven, parking. WCF shall include at least one parking bay, personnel active facility, in addition to any parking minimums for other uses of the park. Eight point one, eight point eight, eligible facility request, uh, an eligible facility request. Is, uh, this is where we get into the administrative approval process. It's a, uh, an existing facility. That's, uh, that's going to be either upgraded or added. And in this case, it's a review that takes place and then it's, it's approved. It's a, uh, I forget what the exact word is, but it's a, uh, an approve and shall not deny type of thing. But there's still a review process, uh, that the zoning board has to go.
Sure. I think there's three instances where it's where, uh, that trigger this and then it's like the tower is higher, being riding by a certain feet. And then there's like, and then there's like estimation or maybe not, you have to say.
At the bottom. Previous.
Tower replacement?
No, seven, for design criteria. Been there somewhere. It's not on the slide. So nine, uh, eight point one, eight point nine. Tower replacement, existing power may be replaced, it's moved to the segment, provided the replacement of a component of the minimum one. Increases in the number of wireless service providers in town and or otherwise materials approved provision of wireless services. Contributes to the reduction of proliferation of new towers. And replaces an existing power with a tower with less impact on the town that would reduce height or improve appearance. And landscaping at the time of replacement or upgrade, the power equipment compound may be rotted and compliant with the input of the landscaping department. And as far as setback go, replacements of existing power is not required to be new setback and there is so long a new tower that's equipped the compound not increasing the amount of quality. So the application process, next session, uh, eight point one, eight point ten. And, um. Well, we didn't list all of them here in the slide because they got under four or five slides, it's quite a list. So we recommend you look at the, uh, page thirteen through fifteen of the proposed bylaw. That's all the, but at any rate, all applicants shall have to plan the grounds of the proposed site, equipment environment, driveways, property lines, et cetera. Uh, both plan views from above and elevation views aside. Uh, photo simulations, uh, which are photographic simulations of what the wireless infrastructure will look like, uh, superimposed on property. Design detail of concealment or camouflage. Or radio frequency emission analysis is required to demonstrate compliance with the legal safety standards. Uh, number five, noise analysis is required to demonstrate compliance with state law and regulations. Number six, the applicant will provide an narrative and any additional considered, then there are demonstrate fulfillment of. And compliance with the criteria outlined in all sections of the bylaw. This one, eight, eight, one, one. Seven, report and support the technical data should be expanded demonstrating the need for addition to existing infrastructure or new infrastructure. Radio impact. Plan with FAA, gather the air navigate, navigating requirements, and a balloon, train pass, balloon slab, one of the other. Section eight point one, eight point one one, employment of outside consultant. So the zoning board is telling, it shall engage an outside consultant and be expended the applicant. Who is given the sign for the view of an application under the wire, wireless communication for the bylaw. So because this is such a, uh, technical. The technical nature of all of this, uh, would require that, that the zoning board be a certified consultant, an expert in the industry, uh, and the applicant have the. So section eight point one, eight point twelve, decision. So special permit findings, you know, consultant with the, uh, independent, consultation with the independent consultant. Uh, make all applicable findings before granting a special permit, follow. So twelve A, special permit findings, the CBA shall evaluate the application lighter second, three point four zone by law. Make findings in applied conditions of the program. Board also handling findings, if the application meets all the application criteria. Or is granted waived with a specific application requirement. B, the applicant has or had not met, heard of, demonstrated the need for the proposed wireless communication facility. C, the application satisfied the qualitative and quantitative criteria of the facility impact. D, the application meets the performance criteria for co-location. New tower or tower replacement, the level. E, the application is unacceptable, does not contain means design criteria. The application in any way or degree granted are consistent with the purpose of the bylaw.
There's another criteria, a finding that got cut off on the slide. It's app, which just goes as that the application and any waivers granted by the zoning board, they have to be consistent. It's the better of the purpose, uh, section eight point one, which is the purpose of the bylaw, they have. The very beginning of this presentation ended with.
But B, uh, yeah, twelve B, administrative, administrative approval of eligible facility request finding. So basically, as I said before, eligible facility request, they'll be guaranteed administrative approval, consistent with the finding, based on their requirements and application of the bylaw. Eight point one, eight point one three. Post-construction, uh, RMR, that is. So at any time after the installation of an approved wireless communication facility. Uh, the town shall require operators to demonstrate compliance. With the FCT regulation regarding the safety of all relevant gradient frequency emissions from the site. As appropriate to the situation, such demonstration of compliance may require either the conduct of a field survey of emissions within accurate measurement. In or by product production calculations consistent with FDC, OB, E bullet sixty-five, which is an industry. It's an industry outline. Guiding calculations on that. So that it's called the evaluating compliance with FDC guidelines for human exposure and radio frequency electromagnetic fields. The town may require the operators to reimburse the town or set an out, dependent on the commission by the path. In the event a result demonstrates the wireless communicated facility not in compliance with the applicable rule. The applicant shall immediately bring the facility to the court. Including by cessation of operating necessary prior to implementing changes. Eight point eight, one eight, point one four, abandonment. So section basically, uh, you know, put the illness on an operator that, you know, they have to. Demission it and remove it and, and name it a site. Basically what, what, what. Section eight point one, eight point one five, exempt facilities. Uh, this section here just kind of basically outlines, uh, facilities that aren't related to cell phone service. That by earth stations, uh, temporary wireless communication facilities, uh, upon, you know, for like a state of emergency. By federal, uh, state and local government, uh. Temporary wireless communications facility for the purpose of providing coverage of special events, more of the trucking scene, big sporting events, broadcast, playing their, that kind of nature. And amateur radio towers, solely used, used for lighting amateur service above seventy feet. Those are the citizen band, uh, hand radio, et cetera. And then we get into definitions, and then basically, uh. That's, that's basically the whole bylaw, not going to read you every, uh, single definition. So now we'll take, uh, some public comment. Questions and comments, um, I would, I would say if you submitted a letter to us already. Um, to, to kind of wait and let those who haven't submitted a letter. Uh, let them approach the, the podium first and ask a question and make a comment. Uh, please keep your comments and questions specific to the bylaw. Uh, you know, suggestions or whatever, um, and try to limit your comments to no more than five minutes.
Oh. It's one of the most important back on the eight point eight, two point four. For the way back. Yeah, it's the, uh, qualitative criteria.
Yeah.
Bottom of the page, right below sixth preference. Uh, these are numbered by, it's eight, twenty, eight point four B. I think something got cut off.
No, I think one, the end of this thing got cut off, but there's also a little, I think, title. So it's, um.
Thank you.
So. Fourth page after this map.
Yeah.
So sentence reads, in addition to the foregoing, if any new tower or co-location on residential structure is approved, the applicant must demonstrate that it's not feasible. You should say before any new.
But then that's, that's repeated. We may want to change that because it's repeated again.
No, but it's slightly, it's slightly different.
Yeah.
Before a new tower is proposed. This was, uh, if any new tower or co-location and the second one is before a new tower. So there's a little leading up to these sentences that needs to happen. The might, the person might say before any. New co-location on a residential project. And the second one would say before any new tower. Or the two sentences would need to be better squashed together.
And we can, we can go and get more discussion after the public comment.
Hey, Tom.
Yeah, go ahead, Pam.
Um, I wanted to mention that I think there's also, um, an element that got dropped from the slideshow because it was moving around in its location. Um, in the document, um, it used to be in qualitative. But I'd suggest moving it to design criteria because that's where it made most sense, I thought. It's also for discussion, but just to, um, ease everyone's mind, it says that. Personal wireless facilities shall be constructed and maintained in compliance with applicable safety and environmental codes and regulations. Including but not limited to radio frequency, energy safety, hazardous materials, noise, building, electrical, and Americans with disabilities act. So in the text version, that's now located at the top of eight point eighteen seven. And again, uh, the apologies, it's, it, uh, gremlins got it in the power, ate it in the PowerPoint.
Okay, yeah, I got it. So with that, with public comment, um. Those turned over to the floor. We'll need a microphone there. Is that one still?
No, it's fresh.
Oh.
There, maybe?
Yeah, okay. So just for the record, when you approach the podium, state your name, uh, your address, on the quiz, or if you're coming.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
My name is Amy Judd, and I've got six minutes between us. And I want to say, excuse me, brother. To hell would the federal government allow him to tell the telecom industry to write his own law? Does everyone here know that the telecom industry itself wrote the Telecom Act of nineteen ninety six? The one that says you as the town Atlantic planning board may not use health concerner as a reason to object to where a panel will decide. The same law that used the bare minimum state. The one that says if it doesn't actually mean you're just getting caught, then it's safe. Ladies and gentlemen, with all due respect to the hard work that you have done these past three years. I think that you have wasted our money on your consultant. Who had, who used telecom industry scare tactics to get you to write a bylaw. That totally favors the telecom industry and offers no protection for people's health. Including schools and residential properties that help the elderly, no bond to property values, no be forth if a tower has a fire. Or fall over on people or property. Right now, the existing zoning bylaw does protect us. And it suggests by different part of the land on Route seven. That if twelve and up would reach the center of Lenox and down to Lenox Dale. The town has never been sued by any telecom company to try and get asked. So why are you so afraid of being sued now that you've constructed the bylaw that hands the town and its residents over to the telecom industry in a thorough manner? Please, I beg you, don't do this to us.
Hello, my name is Mary Schmar, thirty three times three. Um, I would just like to read this. On August thirteenth, twenty twenty one, the U.S. Court of Appeals for the D.C. Circuit. ruled in favor of children's health defense and a landmark case against the Federal Communication Commission. FDC, now in the FDC position, naturally with health and safety guidelines regarding five G and wireless technology. The court's decision states that the FDC failed to provide a reasonable explanation for its determination. That current, that current guidelines adequately protect against harmful effects of exposure to radio辐射 radiation. And they'll turn me through extensive evidence, scientific, typical evidence and the evidence of existing sickness that had been filed with the FDC. On February second, twenty twenty, the children's health defense filed a store case against the Federal Communication Commission. Now giving the decision that for you is twenty five year old radio frequency emissions RF guidelines. Which regulate the radiation incidence by wireless technology because of such a phone, I guess. Cell towers, Wi-Fi, smart meters. And the evidence, basic guidelines that adequately protect public health. In nineteen ninety six, the FDC adopted guidelines which only protect consumers from advanced efforts. Occurring at levels of radiation that cause thermal effect temperature change in this room. While ignoring substantial evidence of profound harm from false and modulated. Uh, RF radiation at non-thermal levels. S C has been received in guidelines for the evidence since the fight, clear fighting the evidence of harm in the wrong way. Of RF regulated sickness and conclusion. The petition in this quickness case, by the way, they won. The petition in the case filed eleven thousand pages of evidence of harm from five G and wireless technology with the FDC award. Some evidence while ready to include widespread sickness. And the attorney admitted was on the case that one was determining, uh, Robert F. Kennedy Junior. The court's initiative quote, the court's decision is quoted in the FDC's phone. The FDC and the FDA as captain agencies, they have the authority to reach, to attach public health in favor of a single minded crusade. To increase telecom industry profits. Can I submit this to you so you guys can research this?
Sure.
Thank you.
I'm going to turn this on, of course, when it's due in May and it becomes still a twenty nine Star Bridge. I'm going to be likely going around because I've been speaking to this many words. For about eighteen months, they heard what they're saying, but I don't think I'm only getting snacks. So I'm sorry for hearing that too loud. Um, definitely. I'm speaking, if you please, yes, I'm speaking for the living persons.
So to the kind of, you, you really, you're really supposed to just address the board that, that.
You want to hear it again?
Hear it again. You're entitled.
I think someone needs to adjust this. Through here, it's dropping at least to be.
You can take it right out of there. The screw isn't tied up.
Very, very.
That's fine.
Sorry, I'm a little bit less than. Um. Just by having asked a number of times over the last eighteen months. For several years, we were committed. On the roof of the Curtis. This is the number one event. And, um, it pains me very much. Um. Which is better, uh, the Curtis is the building. That is residential building for seniors and disabled. Um. Uh, many of those folks are already experiencing health issues. And the people are mobility issues. Um, which did not be taken lightly. I found that. Self-intelligence can be a fire and. Because of all the diseases we're running. So. Think about the man who waited that building. As soon as the fire starts, the power is turned off. There's no power in the building. People will live on the second, third, and fourth floors. Okay, um. Back to the health issues, which we are not allowed to speak about for at least eighteen months. Um, there is evidence that there is biological harm. From self-ignition. And. We have evidence on both sides. Okay, one side said the rhythm arm. Another side said no rhythm. And the northern president is from the toll of communications and government research. If you have two conflicting opinions and conflicting studies. Would you want to vote one of the decider just. Our most vulnerable population? So, uh, the planning board has ruled, uh, from the beginning and. Now it says under section eight point one eight point four, facility impact. Ideally, a newer residential facility will be located on an existing. That's not it. And the one one. Um. Okay, so the question, sorry, um. The next page, eight point one eight point four. Co-location on a residential structure is still living. It's drawn to the permits and thank you for that, but it is not eliminated. How would you like people walking on your roof, turning into a spark in the sky? Having this little ways. Having to, to meet our. All of the towers towards this, it may be ways of having it empty in the week. Um. There is. No good reason more than Curtis building should have. Teleways on it. And I would not allow the best. As long as. And raise forty hours of that on residential building.
Hello, my name is Troy Miller. Um, my name is, his name is.
Hold that both close.
Yeah. Um, first of all. Unbelievable. What you guys have done and I. You can't hear me, but I appreciate, uh. Better, um, appreciate what you all have put into these bylaws. And it couldn't have been easier and. It's very complicated. Um, I'm a nurse. I've got a bachelor's license in nursing. I pay attention to the category of myself or I pay attention to health. Um, well-being wherever I go and everything from. I don't know, really, the environment to environmental issues are all important to me and. I never, um, year and a half ago, when this whole thing started with both in and out of the Curtis. I got interested and started reading. And I still don't know for sure whether UMS are dangerous to people or not. And whether they have health effects, but I know there are two areas strong. Um, there are people on both sides of the issue and I know that. I know that there's a lot of research that indicates it could produce some health effects. Being within certain proximity of cell towers, cement, okay? So that confirms me. I keep reading, reading, reading. My question to you all is, or I'm tired and sick of us and we should go away. So this is my question. Why would your decision in your bylaw be so much less protective? Than where in Barrington, Beckett, Stockbridge, the whole state of New Hampshire? I know some people thinking about the minute here and they're going to be looking at properties. And some of their intent is going to be what kind of protections the town of Lenox put in to protect their citizens? And. I guess I'm just asking the air on the side of caution, you can still have the same face of good connectivity. And, um, you can have great, you know, you can have, you can have great, great, all the stuff you want to attract business. But you don't have to place the towers all over indiscriminately where there's children, where there's turbines, where there's people. If there's any question of making them get sick, do you want them in your backyard or on your roof? Come on, Lennox can do better than this.
Hi, I'm a public guy, thirty two, old Stockbridge Road. You ever been here? Okay, uh, I've been a curious citizen for about sixty months, watching you guys rattle with this question. Um, some of the meetings, and I know it's a very technical issue. You may have hit your level of competency in this. Uh. The competency thing, um. The point I'm trying to make is that I've watched the two consultants that you hired. First, Anthony and Lopori, and now it's, uh, Matt from ProPublica. Aren't they neutral people? Uh, I've been watching one of Zoom presentations by a term listed, uh, dealing with something with a very good ad. One reviewed your bylaw. Name is, uh, turning on the volume. He said that you don't have both ends that behind your back, you have one finger. He also said, after reading it, it's intuition. That's.
I'm what?
And it's. It's not a professional model. That's my concern and I've listened to you guys rattle this stuff. I'm not sure you really have a handle on it. I also in Eldery House, I have a Turner's care. I also, uh, I'm the vice president of the board for the financial institution. We're going to fight very hard with the Lenox County Boarding, not to have anything on that. So we are discussing the deterrence and I know you're concerned about being sued by. So we are discussing deterrence, and I know you're concerned about being sued by a public community, that's not likely to happen. This bylaw, the problem is, they're gonna get a clean other end, and the attorney's telling, so I hope you heed the word. I'm urging everyone that I speak to to note on this bylaw. It's not a good product, it just isn't from my perspective and others' opinions, so take that, uh, over its worth. And thank you for the hard work that you did, it's just, I don't think it's a very good product in any way, so thank you.
Catherine Levin, I'm from Hillsdale, and I'm also the vice president of the Scientific Alliance for Education, which is based out of Massachusetts and Shaker, and we do a lot of, we started out through the environment board and have now taken over a lot of education as far as the mobile telephone, not even the phones. You know, a lot of people talk about this already, it's not a casual statement, people say there's health issues from wireless, it's a real danger. And somebody brought up the court case, which was actually the F D B was, were twenty-three binders amounting to eleven thousand studies showing biological harm. Okay, so it is a real danger, and as of today, many municipalities are now popping on board to halt the implementation of small cell wireless, and it's taking all any point of intent to stay in the cell or I know that somebody else brought the, um, thorough levels that were the safety measures that we use now. And these were tested in nineteen ninety-six at a time when they were using six thousand, and now they're forty thousand, I don't wanna do that. But if we kept those levels down and use our cell for them, you could have so many, so many ten. Now, I did a study, uh, two weeks ago, I went around the head of all the levels in Atlanta, in Hoover era, in Atlantic City, to see if there were gaps in coverage, you do have ones. Now, not against cell towers, I want to say technology. So we help people to write bylaws that, and for citing, you wanna cite the town. You don't wanna cite this law on top of homes where elderly live. You don't wanna cite this law in this community where people are all, it's very harmful, a lot of children, especially with all people, animals, and humans, we would not, we are. You know, I was at, um, I'll leave this for you to read, but I was at, at a funeral today. And it made me think a lot about what have you been leaving behind? You know, it's not about money that you get or talent, it's really about the legacy that you give behind the people. So, when you have to form this commission to study the negative effect of five G, they soon realized that it was not five G that all wireless that needed to be addressed, and your bylaws should be looking at that. Across the states, McKee's done it, Ithaca's done it, in New York, we're looking at it, in Phila, Hillsdale. There were questions, why does the industry insurance industry recognize wireless radiation as a leading risk? And a slight inclusion in their policy not covering damage inside of that, why? Why do cellular manufacturers have an illegal section to fit their devices? Telling you to keep the phone at least five millimeters from the bottom? Why have thousands of period studies, including that sixteen-year U S study, there is a U S company, Tarkology, that showed why patients with kidney, with DNA, damaged brain, heart, tumors, in origin, so many methods, why is that a big problem? Why are the S C C radio frequencies further than this, set for the United States a hundred times higher than in countries that are around the time, interfacial, and nothing to do with them? There's more I can give, but the bottom line is, I really want you to pay attention to what you're doing now, I guess it's important for this community, and I really think of Linux as a very sophisticated and educated, uh, community. And it's worthy of time, and I'm happy to all who would get better to learn to, um, that we do, it's not really.
Your time to start. Um, so I have, I have a question.
Can you handle?
Oh, sorry, I'm just got here, we're teaching Stockbridge Road, you have a question? Um, with the, uh, the preference system, on what, how, when you decide when somebody decides, I guess what you push for is that these are our best spots, we'd like to be taken, but as, as people go through that list, at what point, in this, is there a way to control, is, is everything both on the list, I guess that's a question. Um, if, Mary, does that make sense at all? It's sort of like, if.
Okay.
It's a self. I'm sorry, I'm on this, uh, section eight, eighteen four. So my question is, I guess, is that we have, we have strong preferences for things, and is who controls those preferences? Is that, at that point, after you're gone, after you've done, is that the zoning board that controls that? Okay, so if, and so if some, and the reason I'm thinking about this is that we have a situation where this, this, these locations are going to change quite a lot, I mean, they're, they've been available, but nobody wanted to take a look on the awkward, convenient leaves and spots.
What, what locations are you referring to?
Well, we, I know that there was, in the, in the existing bylaw. And we have locations that are outside of, there's five, there's five parts, okay, identifying, because they're five, yes, all right. So, and these, are these five parts involved, if they're, if they're in the new list we got here? Uh, if they all, two hundred and fifty people said that, yes.
Okay, that's the problem.
Problem, yeah. Yeah, so, all right, so then, here's, and the reason I'm asking this is because I've, I've, I've been in the room during the meetings, uh, where, where you had, uh, Chris Shawly there, uh, talking about how we're doing a great job working with master because of the age and getting sued, so, and I know that has to do with the fact that he was small, that people come out of the curse. So my question is, because the curse, and I think in the last meeting we had, the, the, uh.
Now, now, let's just preface on here, we know nothing about the curse, that, and that whole process. We don't, we aren't involved in that, me and planning board are not involved in that at all.
Okay.
Okay, so we don't know anything, everything that's been said to us about Curtis. Contracts, and we don't, we're not involved in, you're involved in dragging by law to regulate the installation of these physical.
Yeah, so then, this would fall down to the zoning board, would then take a look at the list and say, okay, these are the possible, this is what the preference explains, Mark did die, just become, okay, oh, sorry. That's good.
Yeah.
So, is it, is, is that, that is something that the zoning board would interpret, correct? And they did base, what their opinion was, based on what companies said about their, that's correct? So, and the reason I'm asking this, going forward, was that for a moment, in our last meeting where we got a lot done, a lot of things were being changed and moved around, that the, um, that the, being able to flip, uh, cellular units were on residential came on for this. And then about five months later, it kind of dropped back into this, so went away, and then it came back. And that was a discussion, uh, we, we discussed, like I said, in previous meetings, our planning board meetings, our working meetings, yeah, we discussed the narrative, we thought about ideas, it doesn't mean that it happened stone with that. It was a, it was a, it was a thought process that was brought up, we discovered and debated it, and, and we didn't, we didn't disallow without, well, simple on preferences to not do that. All right, and I think that it's, to be on the bottom of the list is an admirable place to be in this particular situation, but in my different, I mean, it's still thoughtful, though, you know, put, uh, a cellular rate on residential building if some of the other ones do that, right, and one of the other preferences don't work out, okay, the other five preferences.
But the applicant has to, the applicant has to demonstrate.
And prove.
It, it's not a, they can't just say, this is, this is what we're doing, they have to demonstrate that none of these other preferences are working at all.
It's not, it's not their preference, right, it's our preference, they couldn't say, I just prefer to go to that residential.
That's, I mean, you have to say, these, this is the order of places we go, when you have to. Show like your day down to there, so it's still technically possible, but it's not as slightly as it used.
Correct, there's a heavy burden of proof, uh, and then all those E D As.
God, it's her way of those rules, okay, and so, and I think everybody here knows that's a good thinking point, because of what's been going on, so, um, and so I would, I, I'd personally love it if that just went, um, and.
Just, just be buying, buying links to that.
Yeah, okay.
So they just, they just move it.
Thanks. Got it, um, I just had one thing here, that, uh, I, I got a note, um, a few minutes ago, that, uh, there was thirty-seven people, uh, leaning online, but nobody could raise their hand. It'd be disastrous to be, and that was, I got fifteen minutes ago, that message came in.
There's one hand raised, so somebody was able to.
My time is up, can you turn it off? Thank you. If anybody else would be proud, I think some questions probably, uh, folks have to do.
Karen Beckwith, Old Stockbridge Road, fourteen. On, uh, the page of the, uh, reference of the slides, um, which says town like zoning now, it says co-ification probably would prefer residential building from office first. And then on eight eighteen four, it says co-ification on residential structure is the same practice. These could be probably giant, I would like to ask the board to please remove residential structure from college. Like to ask the board to extend the, the, um, setback area from two hundred and fifty feet to a minimum of fifteen hundred feet. And I'd like to ask the board, in order to make this bylaw, uh, true for the future, because otherwise we can't eat this, this is a big brand now approach. Uh, the setbacks have a loophole, you can probably waiver this, a really nice word, and maybe it's a loophole, and it's an administrative loophole, and I would like to have a loophole from residential areas for the setbacks completely strip it from the bylaw, there's no loophole, this is the setback and it cannot be broken. When you put the burden on through on a telephone business, and you're the people, the tigers, the consultant, as you have from the telephone industry, people who are in the business of making sure the towns serve opportunities of telephone preparation on a silver plaque, anything goes. Okay, there's administrative things, you have a job, or you say have a job, or there's a wicked here, or a wicked there, that this bylaw is too lax, and it doesn't give, you've given away all the power of the residents of this town to object, you've given away all the power of this town to say, you know, it's important. I can't find it anywhere, maybe that's because I'm seeing it, so I'm guessing, tell me, but I don't, there are a conversation that occurred in the last play, we're meeting about a school, I've been left in the bylaw, what is a setback for school? And is there another loophole where a municipal building is also a residential building? Or a municipal building is a common, three, from a designated property residential? Or designated populated neighborhood? Where are the latest to us? There's so many, uh, there's so many unintended consequences that are just left, why open? And how does it written, it follow the money? Please take a look and clean it up, just get rid of the loophole, keep us safe. This is something to which you have all lives to sell.
Hi, this is Lily, I'm speaking with her name is Sweet Max. I hear a lot of people are sleeping on my neighbors, those who are first, so she was concerned because she heard talk about the municipal bylaw, she called me, in my capacity as the chair, I'm not really saying, you know, you have any interest, will you have any interest, can I get, you know, to look into this? And, and I did, and quite frankly, my life was here before I had, as my stepdaughter and much originally would say, okay, all in this. But, a neighbor told me and asked me to come because they were concerned, and this is the population we're driving out, low income, just disabled and senior people, but low income, that has a lot of issues, I, with you, that happens a lot of times, and there's nothing, I mean, potentially, or maybe concerned with you, but everyone else they, um, in life, you're, you're the first. And frankly, I'm just, although I share the, that would mention about some of the national issues, things like waivers and exemptions. I asked you one, maybe, will you just write in an exemption for the first? And I heard that, it's not true, people are willing to say, they don't have anything to do with the first, you know, select words that, that's not where this date, you don't have, but the agent makes some comments as you share about student progression, if you remember, about, you know, people who are, and, and I just find that a little mind-blowing, because you're on board, you're representing the people in this town, and if they're applying to select where, it's not really the building, there are people who might and you're responsible, um, to those people, you work with, those positions to help out, when they come and ask for their parents, or their people. Um, so, also, uh, I will ask again, please, just write in an exemption for the first, meaning bylaws, because right now, you can say, and what a residential building, for the first, considering municipal building. And the internet, because this might have a whole stack of communications from legislature, court, R P V, and other, that talk about putting in which certainly has, downloads, again, please, so what are the exemptions for the first either? Um, and I also recreate, so I can be really active in that, I heard, I've been to a lot of meetings, too, I'm, I'm, in your, your lot, these, and I'm gonna smack and talk about suing, a lot of, um, and I find it interesting, because I first, now, I'm pretty, uh, separate, I have eighteen feet of, it's very, it's very teeny. Um, and I also learned a variety of writing laws, for what we brought up, and we're, have, or certain of the, that, that, or other, you gotta And we're, we have, or certain of the, we have, we have, we have, we have, they have a finite amount of, and we're really interested. Now, for creation, trying to make more. Um, and then it's.
You see that as a name, Ms. Bykowski?
Yes.
You have a minute and a half left. So I suggest that you keep your comments specific to the bylaw. Not about the cell phone carriers and all of that.
This, from, um, exists because the cell companies need more than average. I also learned about the regular, I have a machine, you switch your phones, and you call a wideband company, and it's an internet connection in your house, and they usually do it in reverse, too. I also learned that there are a lot of changes in town, and even part of it, it's I'm not a smartphone go with some of that stuff, but can we use the, can we wear on place, seem like a, uh, state with the dude? So I guess, uh, I'll go back to the question, are any board, they'll even, um, do include exemption for the first? For having this important, uh, attached with. Will you even do an exemption for the first? Okay, then I'm just trying to get into some of this letter, uh, someone who is far more of an idea, that we hear in like, with her maiden lifetime, this time, this is no use of that. Uh, she is really rather than using the technology and our request. I appreciated listening in our words, we need to file, we want to leverage on this, right? It's true, the land works very hard, care of downs, the press, holding their knowledge, the protection, and stuff. And they were, yeah, that's most of our service, only information requires, we're, we're being, for, and they go, for technology, thanks. I completely like you, I should, you know, in terms of spirits. I created a man for you, for Ashley, for the school of your ass, and as an evidence of the asking, I think, foundation. I sent eight years of reading in words, and while we've been, we've been trying to bring them on first and through last year. They're a control junior, and it's beyond, they're the contemporary of our shirps, my parents were junior. I was generally, my mother and father, the children, serial partner, children, everyone was close to them, really. None of these, in those, was a gentleman, constantly, by a productive, assuming microwave radiation frequency, that is, is this, this is tough to advise.
Co-located facility, just like the church on the hill. Now, the problem with co-location is there's no setbacks. So you can, if you're a worker in that location or a resident in that work, you're getting a full 500 watts, you're cooking. Now, you can't consider that, but you can put in a zoning, you can put in a zoning setback that's realistic, 500 meters of 1640 feet. Now, the existing bylaws simply keeps it in, in commercial and industrial zones, that's basically away from people, that's basically 5% of Lennox by your zoning net. My estimate.
Well, first of all, Mr. Delarney, you have three minutes left, and I'm going to take a little bit of that time.
Sure.
The existing, yeah, sure, the existing bylaw restricts it to five parcels in town, none of those are in an industrial zone, and most of them aren't even in an commercial zone. Those are in, those five parcels are in residential zone, they're up near the, um, the state highway building.
Okay, but you're, you're, that says, that says you want to change-
And a 1640-foot setback would disallow any wireless infrastructure within the town of Lennox, and that's construed as an effective prohibition, and that's not-
Nobody, nobody has asked for, nobody's asked for power, and nobody has tried to sue you then. But you've just, you've just had a bylaw that goes 20 pages, and they can sue you for anything you want, but it doesn't mean, because it's a possibility of being sued, doesn't mean you're going to get sued. That old zoning bylaw, if you want to make it better, make that better. But the way I look at it is, nothing's going to get changed between now and December 8th. This is going to go to a town meeting, you're going to be a super majority. My vote is no, period. And my friends are going to, my family's going to say no. So, I mean, I think you're going to be back at the, my guess is you're going to be back at the board, back doing this, but I think you better off with the old zoning law, bylaw than what you got right now. Okay, you're slow cookers.
Hello, my name is Sunny Green, St. Helena, 82 West Street. I'm very happy you mentioned the light wave. Um, I think everyone in here would agree that the government at one point or another has given us, each been impacted with some of the things they've given us since the storm broke in. White wave is one of them. We didn't learn for quite long tonight, don't be lessing it in because the pandemic is rolling down and each of them is suffering, and we're just part of the poisoning of our bodies. So I highly suggest that you all go to the, um, Children's Health Network, and through many articles about the, the poisons caused by 5G. I'll just do a little clip here, one little paragraph in an article. Does 5G cause cancer? Many scientists understand that the electromagnetic radiation leading to the doors of our primary living room and start close to the genetic, and therefore can cause cancer. Most of these scientists all believe that the waves are genetic, meaning they change the DNA structure of living beings. The launch of 5G will be similar to the Purcell under my wave, opening this door and leaving it on for the rest of your life. There's a good reason why hundreds of scientists are taking action against the wireless industry. I vote no.
My name is Courtage Delarney, um, 98th Street in Lennox and 17th Avenue in Pittsville. I would be curious, I would be curious, there's nights. But unfortunately, I can't because I believe this is a nightmare, of being blindsided by a tower, will we keep up one day with trucks rolling up by 20th and Street, and discovering without any notification to our entire community, our state representative, our city councillor who did that for 10 years, 120-foot macro cell tower being yours? Now, I chose to live in my home in Pittsville, I lived for six years, we find a perfect house for my children that would be safe. That was off my road, that I could raise my babies, that was in nature, and that was way ahead of construction. And instead I got a town, and on the first day, and I didn't know that a tower would be transmitting, my 10-year-old came downstairs, ditty, ditty, and bitty. And when I went outside, I heard a hum, and walked to the tower, and the electrical was now spinning. That tower's 500 feet from my front door, and we are sick. We have 20 residents in Pittsville who are sick, we have two that have died of cancer. There are very real biological health effects of putting towers next to people's homes. Tonight at Pittsville City Council, there are three agenda items. They have not even discussed them yet, that would be further on this evening. They are writing to our senators, they are writing to our congresspeople to ask for help because the wireless industry knows that this causes harm. We had a neighbor come tonight on the other side of Shamtown who called us collateral, yeah, because they were sellers because they were not harmed. They have a great tree buffer between us, between them and that tower. I can go with my meter, and I can take readings next to towers and away from towers, and I can tell you that Lennox is very blessed. You have these very low radio frequency radiation, you call them clean greenery, and in your own home, you can choose whether to use hardwired internet connections. I even have an adapter for my cellphone, and it allows my family to be safe. My dad owns, and he talks, not just dad, and he's a parent. He watched the great children vomit in their own beds, who had to sleep in his house, to get away from the tower, that I worked so hard to save money to buy that home, and it is now inhabitable. And we have a board of health order that is available in that packet of information because we had an 18-month investigation, and our existing board of health committee finding of harm that our homes are uninhabitable. You have a great wireless zoning bylaw. For those who are new to this issue, read the protections, read the intentions, read the purposes. The purposes are to locate towers so they do not have negative impacts, that they do not impact the community, the general safety, welfare, and quality of life. That has been removed, look at the requirements, look at the standards. You have a tower developer who says, I have eight locations, I want the towers in, right? This is great, he has eight locations, let's talk about those and create a wireless zoning overlay district like we have now. So people don't like me, wake up and be blindsided by a tower. We don't think it can happen, we think it happened on the front page of the New York Times with that recent article with the towers popping up, it's happening here. Don't let it happen in Lennox. This is dividing communities because what happens is when the tower developer comes in and proposes something, the people who have money likely are trying to push back on the application. The poorer communities, as some refer to, they can't. And we talked about what happens if an inappropriately cited tower comes to your neighborhood. Well, I guess you can sue, you can sue the tower company, you can sue the town. And so this divides inputs neighbors against neighbors. Please, we don't want people sick, we don't want people blindsided. You've got a wireless consultant sitting there on the call who says he's never met anybody harmed by wireless radiation. Hi, Mr. Maxon, my name is Courtage Delarney, me, my family, and my neighbors channel. We have been asking for 18 months, please hire a consultant. $8,900 to review the wireless zoning bylaw, make sure that it is protective of everyone. It is inclusive of everyone. Get somebody independent who can do this work. Right now, there is a GoFundMe that was started so that the townspeople can raise the money to try, for $8,000, for December 8th, so they can get by law review. The only shouldn't have to be these people here to do this work. We are asking you for your help, and we have for 18 months. You have not taken a GoFundMe offer to me with a consultant for one hour. The wireless system took me a year to get into PC. We need more doctors, but what we need is more town representatives who can protect it so we don't get to the stage where my children have to get their blood drawn and their brain scanned because of this. Please, we have been asking for 18 months for your help, and we have been ignored. Stop ignoring us, we want to work with you, not against you, to create the best bylaw possible. Somehow you guys have labeled me as some kind of activist with an agenda, and my only agenda is to make sure that what happens to my family and my neighbors does not happen to anybody else.
Okay, Mr. Delarney.
Thank you.
For the record, Mr. Delarney, this board has not labeled you as any player. And I don't appreciate that implication. We've read everything that you've sent us, and we actually went through your comments at the last meeting, two meetings ago, right, two weeks ago, and last meeting as well.
And I appreciate that.
Okay.
But the new bylaw is not as protective as the old one in terms of its intentions and its requirements and its design standards. It is still missing a lot of information that should be in there to make it more protected.
Okay, we have to move on. Anyone else in the room? Please, go ahead.
My name is Diane Sheldon, and I'm a parish who also pray in mode, she doesn't really prefer her parents. It's one of the problems.
You need to address the board.
Absolutely, thank you. I only have one question for you all. Fiber optic cable is a very stable method to connect with the board. Our wiring network-
I'm sorry to cut you off, but fiber optic options are not in our purview right now. We are talking about a wireless communication facility bylaw. If you have questions, comments, et cetera, about the bylaw-
I do understand that.
Okay.
But I would just raise up one question for you. This is a stable method of connectivity. Why are she-
That very well may be, but that's not in our purview at this time.
I still answered the question, thank you very much.
Uh, my name is Alba Weiss, and I'm, uh, 98th Street. Um, I first wanted to say, I'm so appreciative of the fact the town is kicking my butt and all the hard work.
Yeah, I was just, yeah, I'm ready for it.
And, okay, I'm good, I'm here. Um, I'm very, um, I'm sort of, everyone's working as hard as they can. And I just have one very simple thing to add. The community is- And the term SDT, they have ordered that exposure to the towers not by part, there are all considerations not viewed in our minds about how power plays. I find it strange that the SDT goes to the shuttle of many very specific rules about the power. It reminds me of the electricity by defendants, though the warranty is not about the effects of smoke. Health guidelines that you are relying on, you're not necessarily are based on 1992, the West Coast and the West County, and 1996, the 90th Congress on the 8th Amendment. Are they relevant today? Why is there a stricter right on spectrum are so clear than I understand? Since the SDT, the non-moving end roads are talking to the link. So I'm looking to do, one, one step, and we change their unbiased data belief. Two, and change unbiased data, gotta be in post.
There's no one else in the room, we'll start taking questions from folks on Zoom. Go ahead, Susan.
Yes, Susan Wolf, I live on Shaler Hill Road in Lenoxdale. I want to commend the planning board and town planner Gwen Miller for a, an incredibly thorough process to address this critical issue for the town. I support the bylaw. I think it will help bring reliable cell service to all parts of town. And by doing that, it will make life safer for everyone, including our most vulnerable, everyone who lives or works here in Lennox. People cannot carry landlines with them, but they may need to summon help with a mobile phone or smart wa, watch on a hike, or even pushing the trash bin to the curb on an icy day. Um, the devices that we need to use today, the devices that are available for purchase, use 5G technology, and we need the towers to support the technology. Having reliable 5G service will also promote our property values and commerce in town. While I might prefer a more streamlined process with some towers being able to be added with no ZBA or other approvals, I think the bylaw is a good compromise, given the strong feelings on both sides, and therefore I support it, thank you.
Thank you.
She's, is she there or is she on?
Next. Okay, go ahead, Jason.
I'm next.
Jason, uh, Zoom, go ahead. You?
Go to Annie Grocer.
Annie Grocer, go ahead.
Hi, hi, everybody, I'm Annie Grocer. I live at 215 East Street, and I want to make, I wanted you to be aware that it was almost impossible to hear the proceedings tonight. There was so much, uh, uh, the words were garbled, and I don't know if it's because it's in town hall and the ceiling is so high, but it was very discouraging and disappointing, I really wanted to hear everything. I can read the bylaws, uh, you know, on the website, but I would really like to, to know what the testimony was of the people who were against these bylaws, and I'm wondering if that could be provided to the community.
Yes, we will provide a transcription of the hearing and the testimony that's been provided, and we'll post that on the recording of the, of tonight's hearing.
Okay.
We've gotten mixed input, some people have not struggled with audio and other people have, and we'll do a transcription from the Zoom recording so people can read what, what everybody said.
That's great, but I'm wondering if for future hearings like this, there could be another venue, another location, because it seems to me that the, the room, it's, it's so vast, and everything echoes. And I have very good connect, connectivity here at my home on East Street, so just wanted you to know that, thank you. Thank everybody, I thank everybody.
My turn. Go for it.
Yeah, can I, can you hear me? Is it my turn?
Gwen and Tom, you're, you're muted right now.
Go ahead, Jason.
Okay, great. Uh, just want to thank the board for, uh, and Gwen for all your hard work. Um, I, uh, submitted, um, some suggestions, hopefully the, uh, the board has these, um, and I won't take a lot of time on them, um, but I just want to run through real quick. Um, I am, uh, requesting that the board make three additions to the bylaw. Um, the first deals with the sharing of towers and co-location, uh, locations. Um, and basically, you can read what I submitted, but it basically, uh, would require, um, applicants to engineer the, uh, locations, um, so that they could be shared with other wireless communication providers, uh, potentially limiting, uh, many multiple sites around town. Um, the, uh, the next one is related to historic resources. Uh, I just want to point out that the existing bylaw right now, um, has a, a setback of 500 feet vertically, or sorry, horizontally from any historic district or property listed or eligible to be listed on the state or federal register. Um, the, uh, proposed bylaw does address historic re, uh, resources, um, but I'm suggesting that maybe it's expanded, uh, to just make it clear to potential applicants that, uh, that the town, uh, values these historic resources. And then the last one, um, is a suggestion to add residential setbacks for co-locations. Um, I see that, um, the proposed bylaw potentially allows co-locations in every district in town. Um, but there are no setbacks for residential abutters, um, and, and this is, um, I think an important, uh, aspect that, that, uh, isn't currently being contemplated. Um, and, um, I just sort of outline the fact that quite a few other uses in the zoning bylaw, uh, provide setbacks, uh, or require setbacks. Um, so I, you know, I would ask that the board consider at least 100-foot setback. Um, I know that the towers, uh, have a 200-foot, 250-foot setback, um, from residential, uh, property. Um, but I would think that, you know, I guess it's up to the board, but I would ask that there's some sort of, uh, residential, uh, setback from residential properties for co-locations. Um, I can't imagine that it's, uh, particularly controversial, um, and I, I think it will, um, provide some protections to abutters of potential sites. And that's really it, I just, I'd ask that you read what I submitted and please consider it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jason.
I cannot raise my hand, but would like to speak.
Now, go ahead, just identify yourself and your address.
Uh, my name is Paul G., 62 Harrison Avenue, Sausalito, California. Uh, this proposed wireless ordinance deserves a no vote to send a clear message to the town of Lennox. The message is that this proposed wireless industry-friendly ordinance should be sent back to the drawing board and into the arms of a national expert telecom attorney who could easily fix the ordinance for a mere $8,500 flat fee to provide a bylaw that actually protects the property interests of Lennox residents, which this ordinance does not. Residents of Lennox, be very wary of this proposed two-step process. Any wireless ordinance that does not address so-called small wireless telecommunications facilities is just handing a winning ticket to the wireless industry. Such a two-step process is unwise and a great reason to vote no on this very incomplete ordinance. A good wireless telecommunications facilities ordinance would maximize the town's local control over the placement, construction, modification, and operations of wireless telecommunications facilities consistent with federal law, which this ordinance does not. The problem is the planning commissioners only listen to their hired wireless industry consultant. They repeatedly refused a no-cost consultation with expert attorney Andrew Cappanelli for no good reason that we can discern. In fact, the current town of Lennox wireless ordinance, the one you already have, is much better than the one the town is asking for your up or down vote. Lennox residents, vote this proposed ordinance down so you can still benefit from the town's current wireless ordinance, which is much better than this giveaway to the wireless industry. This proposed wireless ordinance gives away the farm, the cows, and the milk to the wireless industry completely unnecessarily. Look, no one wants to admit that they've been duped, but that's exactly what has happened here. The well-meaning members of the planning commission are not wireless industry experts themselves, and they were shepherded through the process by a 30-plus-year member of the wireless industry, not an objective unbiased party or nationally-recognized expert such as Andrew Cappanelli. Mr. Maxon is not a professional engineer, he is not an attorney, yet he does have a strong association with the wireless industry that has employed him for the last 30 years, even publishing a paper in 2020 with Dr. Gerald Bushberg. Who's that? Well, he's the number one CTIA consultant flown around by the country to testify in public hearings for the interests of the wireless industry and against the interests of the residents. Mr. Maxon stands next to Mr. Dr. Bushberg, that's the way it goes. Please realize that the residents of Lennox would be much worse off if the residents choose to vote through this very incomplete wireless ordinance. After this meeting, please go to safecell01240.com, brand-new website put up by a resident of Lennox. Please watch the 30 minutes of the November 17th, 2022 video, starting at 2:10. You will hear Scott McCullough talk. He tells you what is wrong with this ordinance and why you should vote it down. I have one more paragraph, should I cut now?
That's, uh, yeah, we've heard enough, thank you. Anyone else on Zoom? This next time, it's not who that's supposed to be. Right. Okay, if there's nobody else on Zoom, is there anyone else in the room? Go ahead, Mr. Romeo.
Come on, down on Main Street, nice. Um, just a couple of questions, um, before you ask, but I wanted to thank people for all your work. I also wanted to, I also wanted to show some comments to people that may interrupt, you know, the garbage, the soil, grass, say that they're a little bit scary, and send them a, you know, I don't suppose they were, into an available meetings, mandatory meetings, uh, we have a very chemical and very problematic work too. They've never, in my experience, with the common risk, and it's always been a very difficult job. So I think you bring your comments together. The question I have, based on what I've heard here, is with the old bylaw, my understanding would be that it's around the state, um, D O T area. The folks who live across from Church on the Hill, down the old path and wall, would be at great risk with former power knowledge, right now, maybe mentally, is what I think you've been saying. So I can understand how you would think the current one would be- So I can understand how you would think the current one would be protected, because I don't think it is at all. I think the people who live around that stretch would be at a danger with doing something people wish to do. But I don't understand why you would think that would get criticized either. The other, the other question, I just forgot it, but anyway, that's my concern is I don't think that the current bylaw as it exists provides a protection of anomalies.
Think so. So if there's no one else in the room that wants to have a comment or anybody else on Zoom, then we'll move on to board discussion, and then we'll adjourn. So.
Mom, are we closing the public hearing?
Oh, well, right. I think that's right. We have, there's a formality to this, I think. So we, I think we have to vote to close the public hearing and move on to board discussion. So.
Just one quick question.
Yes.
Based from now, is based on the comments that were made at this meeting, is there any chance, are you guys going to go review the, is this the bylaw that you're going to get December 8, or is it going to be some changes?
We can make, correct me if I'm wrong, Gwen, but I think we can make small changes to the bylaw. But if it's a, if it's a material substantial change, then we wouldn't be able to. We would have to, we would have to.
Increase the setback.
We would have to hear it again, which means we would have to have another public hearing, you know, before taking it to town meeting. Is that correct?
Yeah, and I'll let our town council weigh in on this too, but sorry, Gwen, gender. So once the planning board has noticed the public hearing, once the planning board has noticed the public hearing, we really strive to not change the bylaw that's going to town meetings potentially and keep the changes modest so they won't change the policy implications of the bylaw. And you want everybody who is attending the town meeting to have a reasonable understanding and awareness of what they're looking at. So I, we don't advise the planning board to make big changes. So both the town meeting, though they're looking to, and technically they may change it at a meeting itself. I can draw away and some guidance to our listeners.
Thanks, Mr. Chair.
If I wanted to amend the bylaw, I've seen processes being amended.
Yes.
If I wanted to make an amendment to make the setback 1640 figures.
You can make a motion on town meeting floor to make that amendment. Whether or not the moderator will accept it or not is another subject.
Please, no change, minimal change. This is what we're going to have at town meeting.
Basically. Well, we're about to have a discussion, but we're way to be close to public hearing.
I would also just point out, if there's concern that this process has been rushed, has it been taken into account, the folks hoping for enough input and research, pulling a fast one to amend considering by law on the floor, and especially in town meeting, strikes me as intransigent and not fair.
But I don't understand what you're saying.
So it'd be interesting.
Yeah, but we try to avoid that because the whole purpose that we act on the minimum provision is give every voter a fair and a reasonable idea of what they're voting on before they show up at a meeting. And that's why we take some of the pain to have a fairly complete, ready-to-go zoning bylaw that's available in the third copy and on the website. We update it after a meeting. Just, I think everyone should know that we take this seriously and we want people to have fair warning of what they're considering and what they're voting on at that.
Well, people have written in and given you, you guys today and made comments, but you're not putting any, you're not going to change anything.
We haven't had a chance to talk about what you've said today, but you're still talking about it. So when you're done talking about it, we're going to discuss it.
Hey, Tom, can we also?
Heard your comments throughout the process, and we don't always agree with them. Go ahead, Pam.
Hey, can we hear from Joel? I just, I would love to have a reminder from him on to what extent we can amend at this point and how we present that at town meeting.
Right.
I think it would be good for everyone to hear.
Attorney Bar, you have the floor.
Thank you. So there are two considerations here. I think what Gwen was articulating was more of a, what was a mixed, if you will, policy determination or decision by the board with some legal backing there. I'll make one observation. This board has been extremely conscientious in the development of this bylaw over many, many, many months with a lot of public input along the way. So, and of course, tonight was the formal public hearing, but I heard some as recently as last week, and I know you've had some before. So it's not the first time you've heard from the public, and I imagine, I know actually some of the changes that were made just last week reflected public comment in terms of setbacks from residences and so forth. So in terms of what you do tonight, you do have, I'd say considerable leeway. Certainly can't make any major changes, but the point of a public hearing is to hear from the public and, if appropriate, respond to those comments. But as I mentioned, you've been hearing those comments, and frankly, I don't think I heard anything tonight that I hadn't heard before from the public. So you've, you've heard them, you've made some changes. If you want to continue to make small-scale changes, you certainly have the ability to do that. And by the way, when it gets to town meeting, it becomes a question of whether or not a proposed amendment is within the scope of the article, and I don't need to get into that now, but that's a slightly different standard from what you're dealing with tonight. But you certainly have leeway to make reasonable changes in your final recommendation.
Yeah. Go ahead, Olga.
I couldn't understand that.
Hey, I have a question, Joel. So when the warrant gets posted, there's a copy of the bylaw that goes into town hall at the town clerk's office. I think already what we have is, has got at least some, you know, small edits, things moved around a little bit, whatever. Do we, for the presentation at town meeting, do we say, I think you told me once before, something like, we say, we present it as amended or as included in your package today, because I know that usually we print it out.
That's right. So there'll be a copy of the bylaw as you, let's say you do some tweaks tonight, or, well, I guess it would have to be tonight. So that presumably will be the final draft of your bylaw. When people sign in or check in a town meeting, a copy will be available, and it will have next week's date on it. And the motion at town meeting will be to move the bylaw handed out at town meeting dated, forgetting, is it December 8, 2022? So that way, you won't have to get up and make the minor amendments that might happen tonight or tomorrow, that sort of thing, just, you know, whether they're editorial or something more significant, you might decide tonight.
Thank you.
So Olga, did you want, you didn't hear that? He's basically saying that some changes are acceptable tonight.
I can hear you.
Some changes are acceptable tonight if we decide that we want to make them.
My question is, I hear a very general, this kind of chant by law. And is it really a perfect, just the voting on it on the day? Would it be more time to actually investigate and follow up on this objection that we're missing?
Well, I think the majority, I think everyone on this board would agree that the amount of work that we've, that has been put into this, we're ready to move and follow at the town meeting. We can make some minor changes. We're going to discuss that in a few minutes. But the work that's been done on this, the consultation with Mr. Maxon and Mr. Lepore previously, we think that we're ready to take this to town meeting, that the bylaw in its current form is, is pretty much ready to go. And if anybody else disagrees with me on board, please speak up. But I think, you know, after our last meeting, that's pretty much the agreement. Right, and I would just add.
That it's, it has the stamp of approval from K P Law as well.
Right, and I would just add that the process is then, everybody gets voted on.
If it gets voted down, we guys will do it again, right?
So we've been asked to solve a problem, and not everybody agrees with what the problem is. So, so.
If it gets forward.
If we're asked to solve it, look, I mean, the reason I'm on this board is I'm trying to help the town as it needs help. So this broad, so.
This is a simple question.
Yes, I'm not getting the answer. Stop interrupting me.
Mr. Jelar, let, let Mr. Harwood speak. So if the chair doesn't recognize you.
That is significant.
I'm the chair, and if you keep it up, you'll be asked to leave.
I can leave right now for.
If that's your choice, then you can leave.
So I'll, I'll just ask a question. For Mr. Lord, it's bad. Just that it was significant interest in examining this, going down. You may not like what we decided or what we drafted, but just if we decide it anyway, you can decide for against it, and if it comes up again, that it still needs to be addressed the next two years or years. Right. I think if it gets voted down at town meeting, I don't think we can address it again right away. I think if it gets voted down at town, I think we, we have to.
We can vote to, we can vote to bring it forward again next time.
Oh, we can?
Yeah, we can. If you read, we've gone through this before. If you read 40G, you can. We just have to make a vote to do it.
But we can, we can.
Joel, Joel wants to talk.
You can bring it over, but it's a matter of process, really. I get it. Regarding people in this room don't like, don't like this bylaw and for the reasons I completely described. And so I think we could, I'm going to make a motion to pass the public hearing.
Second, second motion.
Any further discussion on board? Very done. We'll take a roll call vote. Tom Velasco, aye.
Susan Lyman, aye.
Pam Keever, aye.
Okay. Public hearing is now closed. We're going to move on and have board discussions. Welcome to stay. It's still an open meeting. There's just no longer a public hearing. Thank you for your input, and now we'll move on and discuss.
See if there are.
So I think there were, so go ahead.
There was a question coming out of the center.
So I don't know, just want to make sure Pam.
Pam, can you just, yeah, here?
And I can hear, yes.
I, there was a question from the audience as to whether a particular location could be exempt and, you know, explicitly, and I'm wondering if it's worth asking Attorney Barr for his opinion about that.
Oh.
I was just like on the record, municipal councils, addressing whether or not it's legal for the planning board to identify one location that would be exempt under all circumstances for wireless. Is Attorney Barr still on?
Yes.
So did you catch the question, Joel?
I, I missed a couple of words. Whether or not.
And he could speak up too, because.
Can we say currents? Or any other. Any versus.
Would it be legal to explicitly exclude a particular location in a municipality for a wireless bylaw?
Yes. So can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes, it would be legal to exclude a location, several locations, yes. I mean, the one consideration is spot zoning, but considering that you're allowing large areas of town to be eligible, you could exclude certain specific locations.
Can I say something to that, which is?
Yeah, I mean, I actually am having trouble. Joel, can I just speak up a little bit more?
He said it could.
I thought.
He said it could be, yes.
It could, it could be.
It could be maybe concerned about spots, like considering the bylaws, the laws generally bring to apply. Town hall, probably.
It has to be demonstrated to make it legal.
So is this, is this loud enough? I don't want to speak too loud. Is that good?
Yeah, it's not too loud.
Okay. But what you run the risk of is a charge of spot zoning. But if, I, I mean, I guess we would want to discuss it. If, if you were looking at eliminating just one location, I wouldn't see a problem with that. If it were to be several locations, I think you'd want to go back to an overlay type approach. And the overlay districts could be very large.
So I have a problem with that idea.
One finger.
So my problem with that idea is that, like, I'm not, whatever rule we're making for town, it's for town, and if it's not acceptable for somebody, it's not acceptable, right? And so basically, my opinion is that this, I gotta be honest with you, because somebody's gonna, regardless. So I don't like the idea of excluding a specific spot, like the Curtis. On the other hand, some of the other things that were brought up and to do, and I guess this was brought up last week, I was hearing about schools, that I see as something different, because the schools are something everybody uses. So that's on my notes to discuss, but I don't want to lead by your issue. It just, there's an overlap.
I mean, that, so that, that sort of brings me to my second question, which is, you know, maybe, maybe it's not desirable to identify one location as, as being excluded as a possibility by adwas. Do we identify congregant living spaces?
You mean, you mean multifamily?
Instead of by, instead of saying like, Curtis, do we identify?
So you don't, you mean multifamily?
Pardon me?
You mean multifamily, not congregant living.
I mean, you know, I mean, for instance, I suppose you've been arguing in nursing home or, yeah, multifamily.
Both, both, multi-univers.
What, what, what about that, Attorney Barr?
Yeah, that does raise spot zoning considerations. I think.
That would make sense to me.
You want to be able to identify geographically where the zoning applies and not have a so-called floating zone where suddenly a structure becomes, let's say, a multi-resident structure.
Thank you. James.
I mean, so my notes really had to do with the concern about waivers. I have the Curtis exemption. The question raised about waivers, I find the waivers just experientially counter and, but problematic. I wouldn't mind seeing that language go away. So where, where specifically? You know, waiving the setbacks occurs in several places. 88. So the one you should have, Jim, is update 1128. Okay. Let's see. So there's a waiver there for the reducing the setback to the last one and a half times.
So there's a waiver there for the, uh, reducing the setback to the last one and a half times the tower height.
Yeah, I just.
Based on, based on, you know, but it's not arbitrary. There's the three county.
Um, David. You did say to me, like.
Yeah.
Bottom of the page.
Yeah.
So like, so with the word nine.
Well, maybe reduce, yeah, if the waivers is maybe reduce.
Yeah, based on following findings.
I think the thinking, the thinking behind putting that in there was contemplating some sort of example. Uh, so you're, you're in a, so a residential zone, right? And you're, but but there's a lot of land. And you want to put a tower. Uh, yeah, and not many people around, right? So it's kind of a nice site. Um, you want to put the tower as far back on the parcel as you can. Um, and. Two fifty puts it more into the parcel and closer to where you don't want it to be. And it'd be better pushed back further and nobody would be affected, because there's just lots of land around it. Or trees around it or something like that. So it's just, it was in there to give the board flexibility. Um, in, in good scenarios.
Yeah, I I hear you. And when you put it that way, it sounds very reasonable. It just, to me.
No.
A giant loophole. You drive a truck. In another scenario, which was, you know, less desired.
So if we take out the, um, if we take that out. Um. So 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 strongly about it. You know, it could go either way. Um, I presume that as with all other zoning applications. Uh, a case would have to be make made for a dimensional variance if there were a lesser setback. Desired, so. That's probably, that's probably where they'd go if it was some kind of really desirable situation. But it'd be easier to say no to that, for sure.
I I could, can I address, uh, Jim's concern?
Yeah.
About driving a truck through it. So, uh, Jim, if it's any, any consolation. The zoning board would have full discretion as to whether or not to grant that waiver. And there are the guidelines in the bylaw. That would would guide the zoning board in making that determination. And if they denied the waiver, uh. It's denied. It's just their discretion. And then either the application goes forward in another location or it doesn't.
Yeah, but my concern is that.
Oh.
They may be. Motivated to not deny it. It's, I just seems like. It, I guess it depends on your understanding of. How things transpire. Here in Lenox.
I I have a question in by. Which, okay, so let's say, you know, we have here, as you stated, that the new zoning board has. Not absolute discretion as to whether this is allowed or not. Versus we want, you know, the the entity seeking a, um, variance. Right? Um, well, you know, as between those two. Methods of getting to this point where they want, you know, a a setback that is less than two hundred and fifty feet. Wh- which would be the more demanding of the avenue? For the, for the petitioner, the person looking for, which.
Well, to get a dimensional variance, and you know this from being on the zoning board, Susan. Uh, they have to like meet those, uh, dimensional tests.
She was asking Joel.
Oh, oh.
But thank you.
Uh, i- in addition. Uh.
Sorry.
Yeah, the variant standard. As a legal matter, is just about impossible to meet. So it's a very, very high standard. However, uh. In the case of wireless communication, basically telecom towers. Uh, when a town zoning, for instance, your current zoning would clearly be found. To prevent large sections of town from being served by a new tower. The, and if they applied for a variance and didn't get it, the courts are routinely overturning those. So. The, um, I mean, typically the applicant goes to federal court and they really give the state variance standards short shrift. But as a general proposition.
I'm sorry. Are you saying that the going with variance through gen- generates more litigation?
No, not necessarily. I I, I'm saying that, uh, the variant standard is very. Hard to ease. If the applicant can demonstrate that. There's a significant gap in service and they've picked a location that fills that gap. A federal court would likely overturn the variance denial. That's, there's, there are dozens of.
We didn't say there was a denial, right?
Yeah, yeah.
It's a, it's a varied process. Can I say it back to you and see if I got it right? In the case of a variance. You'd have to prove a hardship that was specific to the property. Right? And that the relief sought is less detrimental than the harm created by the. Isn't that generally how it's?
That. It is, you said, isn't that generally? And I'd say it's most often the case. But what I'm saying is. The federal courts in the telecommunications act context is sweeping that away and granting the variances. Very frequently.
Okay, but so then you're saying that no matter what we do, we're subject to losing. But I'd still say I'd rather have the tighter control over it. And then. We end up losing a court, again, we're losing a court.
Well, I can turn that around and say that the benefit of giving the board. The flexibility of granting a waiver when the circumstance is warranted. Might allow for a tower to go into sort of the fact pattern that Pam was contemplating. Might allow the board to allow a tower to go in a location. That with a modest waiver would be legit, rather than having to. Deny it because there's no ability to waive a setback.
This is David. Can I comment? I'm on on my experience with this. As you know, I've been involved in hundreds of zoning hearings for all kinds of cell sites, including cell towers. And. Um, what I see zoning boards dealing with when they're asked for a variance that they can't grant under state law. And they're scratching their heads and talking to town council or special counsel about how to deal with this. Uh, what might be an effective prohibition of service if they don't grant a variance. Uh, it gets pretty complicated. And it's all based on. Uh, getting coverage data and significant gap data and all doing alternatives up the nostrils. Um, having this sort of gray area where. Uh, an applicant is gonna look for that two hundred and fifty foot setback. And if they can't find it, they're then gonna look for something that might meet the waiver. And then if they can't find that, they'll look for something that needs a variance. If you whisk away the waiver option. When they come in and can't meet the two hundred and fifty foot setback, but they're looking for a solution. Now, anything that requires a variance is open season. Uh, they won't look for something that would have met a waiver that doesn't exist. They will look for anything that that suits them. So this, this kind of flexibility gives the town more control over. These situations that might crop up where they can't meet the two hundred and fifty foot setback. So it's. It's a belt and suspenders approach to maintaining control over the placement of wireless facilities.
That the formula, one point five. You know, times the tower height. Is, are we better off if we allow that to say, um, no, you know, no less. Uh, say, for instance, take a solid one hundred and fifty feet. Setback and it can't be anything. More than that. Or less than.
Still less than.
My dear.
Can I comment again?
Go, go ahead, Dave.
Yeah, but we we've had some discussions of this. I don't know if it's been in subcommittee or or with the whole board. But we 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 have in our mind's eye this a hundred thirty to a hundred fifty foot tall tower as our. Uh, uh, our canonical model for when we're walking around, looking at that where a tower might go. If someone comes in with a proposal for a seventy or an eighty foot pole. And as Pam was talking about, maybe they want to put it near the back of a property where nobody's going to see it. And if it's eighty feet, one and a half times the height of an eighty foot pole is, uh, you know, a hundred twenty feet. Um, that's. It's, it's related to the height of the tower rather than simply to a hard and fast, uh, uh, setback, partly for that reason.
Yes.
That will case the balls over.
Right.
Is that, is that the basis for that formula?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the question. Was that from you?
Uh, yeah, the, the, yeah, so the basis of the one and a half times gets to the falling, uh, you know, the breaking thing and and falling over, right?
Well, as you may have heard in hearings, towers don't jump. So really, anything that's slightly over the height of the structure is is adequate for collapse purposes. Um, but I I see one and a half times as the ruling criterion in many communities, rather than two hundred and fifty feet. So, um. It, what that does is helps provide a certain amount of distance from the property line to keep the structure from creating a looming. Aspect over the neighbor's property. And so i- in fact, if you had one and a half times the height rather than two hundred and fifty feet, you would be like a lot of communities in Massachusetts.
I agree with David in doing the benchmarking and including, I think, the benchmarking and a number of the bylaws submitted. By, um, uh, citizens, something like a one point five multiplier was super common. So our two fifty, our two hundred and fifty feet is actually stronger than many, many bylaws out there. More rigorous.
Thank you.
What else on your list, Jim?
Schools was on my list, yeah, the three proposed. I thought quite well proposed.
Case of the.
Yeah.
So the, the, the school, we had the school discussion last week. Um, and. The, the thought process was that the thousand foot setback was, it's basically arbitrary. And and I would think the same thing. We've, we've been. Told numerous times that a reasonable setback is sixteen hundred and forty feet. Then why? Why are the same people asking for a thousand foot setback on a school? Why not make it sixteen hundred and forty feet? From a school, but. I think, which, which goes more to the fact that the thousand feet's an arbitrary number.
So it's two hundred and fifty, but.
Yeah.
Uh, so the crux of the issue, right? Is like, here from now, there's more distance, it's better. So if you would do it ten miles, then we should have. But so my question is.
Yeah, but then you can't provide.
I understand, I understand. So the question really is. Do we want to create some additional distance around the school?
Uh, well, the other, the other. Part of that whole discussion was the, it was, it was a line of text. It was a suggestion that Mr. Lardy had made. And in that line of text, it wasn't just schools, schools, playgrounds, blah, 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 et cetera, et cetera. So. It morphed into this whole other discussion. Well, all right, well, well, all right, well, what defines school? Does that include daycare centers? Is that, and and some of the research I've done on it. Daycare center wouldn't necessarily include it. It would be schools, public or private. So, so, so there's a web by seventeen sheet that that you have that shows. Um, a circle around, it's a thousand foot circle, right, that you plotted around, around, uh, Chris's school.
Yeah.
Yeah, I saw a story school, Lenox Dale, High School, Morris.
And the community center property, because that's where the children's center is located. And so I didn't have a kind of definition to go up on. So I could include probably all of the. Um, properties in town that could house, you know, children or teens.
Well.
You kind of at least eight hours a day for most of.
But so.
But schools is defined as public or private.
Yeah, yeah.
And is the children's center. Is that classified as a school?
Joel advised us when we had this conversation to spend our time on definitions. And we. Once we started talking about it last week, Jim, where we're like, oh, my gosh. This is getting complicated fast.
Okay, but so two things I would note that. This is the sheet we're talking about.
Okay.
It doesn't look like it looks too big of a hole. In those, you know, available areas. And then. Interestingly, actually, it's just occurring to me now. Um, I don't think we're, they're giving co-location on schools. So I just want to make sure that that's. Right? Because it's not a residential structure. We haven't pushed it down the priority list. Places to locate. In fact, in some ways, if you look at the priority list. It's a non-residential structure and it's town property. It's. Blah, blah, blah. We might be actually pushing this on to schools.
You know, the school, the school board would still have to. Agree to lease space to do so. And in fact, I probably would have to go to town vote. Because it's a municipal structure. So. You know, there would be a lot of, what did you say, bridges to cross before they got to that one?
I answered, well.
Cross that bridge when we come to it, right?
Yes, sure, I did say that.
You did say that. That's what I'm saying. Lots of bridges to get there.
Um, and so then. Last thing is I think, I mean, I would make a motion to add these three. You know, I, I, before we do it, let's have a discussion about them. But they seem pretty well thought out.
Your target top, Jason Burgers.
Yeah.
Can we share the screen on Jason Burger's items so I can see them? Because I, one of, one of them, we already have, like, it's in the bylaw already.
Oh, it is?
Well, one of them.
Well, so.
I need to see him on the screen.
Well, I don't know that we can do that.
Yeah, Glenn can share the screen with the document.
Well, I don't know that we have this document as part of the.
Yeah, it was.
She has it.
It was a great. It was part of the.
I have it here if you want me to, uh, put it up.
Oh, thank you, David. I have to go into my email and get it.
All right. This is David. So, uh, I took a note, uh, uh, from, uh, Jason's comments as well as from his, uh, his, uh, letter. That, uh, there were three topics that came to mind. I called one site sharing. And I think that is pretty well covered. I I don't suggest that you require that be a minimum number of carriers to occupy a. A permitted facility, because facilities come in all shapes and sizes. And there are situations where you don't want more than one carrier in a facility. So.
So David, can I jump in here and say? And Jason, because I think you're still on there. And I know Jason read the entire bylaw and. But the issue of, um, asking for multiple carriers is section eight, eighteen. Six. Two, A. Two. Under height limitation for new towers. There's a balancing test in the permit process when it comes to height. And we say, everyone remembers the balancing test. We had lots of discussions. Uh, the facility shall be designed to accommodate multiple users to the maximum extent technologically practicable. In order to reduce the number of other facilities, blah, blah, blah. But ever, but however, at their discretion, the zoning board may re- reduce that capability. If they decide that, given the situation, it'd be better to have a two small towers in a vicinity rather than one large tower. So, so the requirement for sharing is in there for, for, for multiple users is in there.
Pam, what section did you say that was?
Eight.
It's new towers, eight, six, eight, eighteen, six, under height limitations. A two.
Yeah, but so I mean, it looks to be like this was just drafted to add some additional requirements there to that same section, which.
Can I? Does it really add? Does it really say much more? Can?
Can I, can I just respond to that?
Uh, well, Jason, let me try.
Yeah, no problem.
Uh, so the differences that I see, uh, is that it specifically says at least two other. Firewood providers. Uh, and it mentions, uh, space, other provider, market rates. Uh, and, uh, ability to expand to accommodate additional providers. And mentions commercial in reasonable terms. So I think it just goes a little further.
Go back to David then.
Okay, I'm just looking at the language. And so so the first part is, is, you know, maximum extent practicable and so forth is is consistent with what's already been said. Um, and then adding to that, it says for at least two other wireless communication providers. That might be fine for some cell towers. It might not be fine for other cell towers, and I'm not even talking about colocations yet. If we go to colocations, you may have a church steeple that might have room for one carrier. And you're not going to approve it because it doesn't have room for two carriers. Um, I I just think that that is, that's something that needs to be left to the context of the situation and the discretion of the board. And as long as they have a roadmap for that, that that should be sufficient. Is, I'm having trouble hearing. Is someone speaking?
Yeah, it says, it says that it's not practicable. So it was a situation where it's inside a tower.
Yeah, I'm, I don't know about anyone else. You're cutting in and out. Can you speak without the P A system? You might, the owl might pick you up better.
Same. So it says it's all subject to practical practability, as you pointed out. And it's just emphasizing that this is important. And in a situation where, as you mentioned, a church steeple where the guest, the interest is in preserving the look of the church steeple, it's not practicable to make it available to two or three, that would not be a reason for denial because it's not practicable. So I would say that this is exactly the same argument you made about the waiver. Um, but in this case, it's an argument suggesting that you should have multiple carriers unless it's not possible. So I think it's a good idea.
Uh, uh, here's what I've seen happen at at the Cape Cod Commission over the years. Uh, they have a, you know, a, a multiple carrier requirement for a new tower. And, um, uh, and I've seen this in other towns as well, and a tower company will come in and propose a tower to the maximum in terms of height, even though they have only one or perhaps two, uh, co-applicants. And they will point to the bylaw and they'll say, see here, you're requiring me to maximize it, so I need this height. That's why we put in the balancing test. If we put in this at least two other wireless communication providers concept in there, it it's going to be in tension with that balancing test. It's going to put more emphasis on multiple carriers and, uh, but potentially distract the, uh, the, the fact finder from looking at the impact of the additional height that's required for those additional carriers that may or may not show up in the future. Um, so I I I'm suggesting that what you have in the way of language is necessary and sufficient. Um, and, uh, it includes the board making a judgment as to how many additional wireless carriers a new facility should, um, uh, be able to handle.
Yeah, but the next line says, however, at its discretion, the zoning board may reduce the capacity for multiple facilities if the board finds that it's preferable to consider the need for a second power rather than approve one taller.
Uh, 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 right. So since that already discusses multiple facilities, why inject the sort of arbitrary designation of at least two other wireless facilities? We already have the term multiple. And the context will determine what quantity that multiple should be.
Yeah, I think this is, I think this is all really splitting hairs and that what we have is good.
And and but let's, but if we may, let's, let's talk about the other points because I think, uh, uh, you know, you made a good point that there are some, some suggestions in here that we shouldn't overlook.
Can we share screens so we can all make sure? Can we do that?
Do you want me to do that?
Yeah, share screen of the doc.
Yes, please.
These.
I can't.
You have to give up.
Allow you to.
All right, screen one.
Let's do historic buildings in district first because I think that's easier. These.
Uh, I, yeah, when I was originally speaking, I was just going to summarize the three points and step back, but, um, uh, do we want to finish?
Yes, let's, let's finish this, please.
Sharing and co-location thing? Okay. All right. So you're seeing that now. Is that big enough?
Yeah, that's good.
Okay, so, um, the next element on this is uh, providing for facilities that can be expanded to accommodate additional providers. That's part and parcel of approving a four-carrier wireless tower when there's only one or two carriers, uh, as co-applicants. Uh, I I don't know, need to know that it needs to be stated.
Well, that's kind of in that C, in that whole tower height thing. Remember, we had that one, two, three, and I asked about three, like, explain this one. And it was for to allow, uh, you know, you only, you're starting with one carrier, but you want to put two more on there. So you're asking for more ha- height than it seems like you need right now. So that's kind of covered in our, that is covered in our bylaw.
And i- if we move on, um, it, rather than a written agreement, uh, you just make a, a, a condition. Uh, I think, and and Joel can certainly comment on this, that, um, and I see this all the time. No, if it's a carrier that's building a tower, um, uh, the permit is conditioned on the fact that carrier will make at least X number of other spaces available to, uh, uh, other, other carriers.
So that, so you're proposing it should read, any special permit granted for a new facility should be conditioned, um, should, should, should require as a condition that the facility operator allow the co-location of other wireless communication providers on commercially reasonable terms? Is that what you're suggesting?
Uh, yeah, basically, Joel, um.
I think it's May, though, Jim, because again, we have this balancing test issue where it may be decided that we don't want a big honking tower in a location. So it, and the May can, that's why it says May. And if you put it in there, the C D B A will do it.
So so you're talking about that last sentence, partly required. Well, the last sentence in in what Jason has asked about, where is that going? Is that going under the first bullet point in the balancing test or under the second? What's that mean, Ed?
I, or else it can go into the decision findings. I don't know.
No, it should probably be aligned under the balancing test.
Why don't we just make it number like four, since it's about a condition? I don't.
I just mentioned one thing to the board.
Sure.
Um, I just want to point out, I I I don't want to get involved in your discussions, but I do want to point out, this is Jason, by the way. Um, I just want to point out that what's currently in the bylaw, which which is perfectly fine. I don't, I think I didn't see that. Um, but I just want to mention that it speaks of new towers and doesn't address co-location. So you might want to consider it saying new towers and co-location.
Jason's correct. It's not in co-locations. It is in towers.
So since somebody asked, if we're talking about the last sentence, I think that's fine. Any special permit granted for a new facility may be conditioned upon. That's fine.
I think if we're going to include it, put it in height limitations and just make it number four.
Right, I'm not clear on the context, but I'll leave that up to you.
It's, it's, it's new towers, requirements for new towers, height limitation. And I think if you just make it for, number four, the zoning board would look at, um, in that little section as, and it's sort of, uh, holistically and say, okay, we're going to make that condition, you know, in this case or not. I think that makes the most sense.
So why, but to the, the point raised about co-location, why don't we want multiple language about multiple users in co-location?
Let's, let's visualize again what co-location is. Um, uh, it could be the, the roof of a, a small commercial building. Could be a peaked roof and, uh, you know, you only want to have one fake chimney on the roof. You don't want to require them to have three. Um, it, it's, uh, co-location is, is a, a, a much broader scope of variations in, in design and capacity. Um, so, uh, I, I, I don't think requiring sharing of co-location is quite the same thing as requiring sharing of a tower. The tower is, uh, conceptually an insult no matter where it goes. And you might as well make the, the, the most use of that insult that you can. Uh, whereas co-location is an attempt to make things either invisible or hidden in plain sight. And as soon as you, uh, and unfortunately, FCC is kind of allowed this from section sixty four oh nine as well. As soon as you allow one wireless facility on a building, um, uh, somebody else co-locating with, with that wireless facility, uh, could end up creating clutter that you didn't intend in the first place. Um, so i- i- I think it's wise not to encourage site sharing when we're talking about co-location, but to leave that just as an open possibility, depending on the context of the situation.
Yeah, and David, building on that, this Joel, maybe if you described some co-locations, I mean, some are as small as, um, you know, whatever, a little bit bigger than a football or basketball. Um, so in other words, to require a co-location really wouldn't, an additional co-location if you, it wouldn't make sense. Am I correct about that? I mean, conceptually, co-location takes a lot of different forms.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Okay. That leaves us with.
Yes, 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 this last sentence. Any, any special permit granted for a new facility may be conditioned upon the written agreement. Facility operator will allow co-location of other wireless communication providers on commercially reasonable terms. That's going to be done.
Okay.
Under E S eighteen six.
And I, I still have a question about the written agreement part of the facility operator. Um, uh, uh, ownership changes. The people who sign these documents in the first place, I think, are often suspect as to whether or not they have the authority to sign on behalf of the, uh, the, the wireless carrier. Um, so i- in my thinking, just simply conditioning the permit so that it, it runs with whoever
Yeah.
has bought the facility out, um, uh, for all time, uh, might be sufficient. So, Joel?
Yeah, yeah, I know. I'm embarrassed that you made the comment instead of me because, um, a special permit condition is much stronger than any written agreement between private parties. They could change the written agreement. I mean, granted, it's in the bylaw, but yes, just have it be a special permit condition.
So we would strike, so, so all we would have to do then is strike upon the written agreement of the facility operator.
Correct.
Right, word. So the may be conditioned to allow the co-location of other wireless communication providers on commercially reasonable terms.
Correct.
Right?
And that may be the first time a lawyer ever suggested that we didn't need a contract.
An old fence taken.
So now do we want to talk about the historic?
Is that the last one, yeah?
Buildings.
Uh, whether it was schools and then it was historic, um, at, as far as the historic, let me just put my take on that. First of all, anything that is as described, eligible for the federal register, on the federal register, uh, designated as historic resource of some kind or historic district, those are all subject to the National Historic, uh, uh, Policy Act or whatever it's called, uh, N H P A. Um, and there is a federal programmatic agreement between the FCC and therefore its licensees and the state historic preservation offices that, that codifies what the process is for allowing, uh, uh, first of all, determining whether or not a wireless facility is in the A P E, area of potential effect. And there is a complex rubric for describing, for defining what is an area of potential effect for an historic asset. If we go in and put in a number, we're kind of in conflict with whatever it is that the historic people use to define the area of potential effect. So my suggestion would be to leave the historic protection to the historic people and rely on the language that we have in this bylaw draft that refers to protecting those historic resources.
So where's that language?
Let's, uh, do, do a word search.
Yeah, I gotta do a word search of the bylaw. Well, there's one in qualitative criteria, eight, eighteen, four. It's the uh, first, first bullet of the six or five.
Historic resource. Do not have an undue advert in that, uh, historic resources.
I think it might be somewhere else, too.
But I think the only language that, that Jason wasn't recommending a number for him, I know. He, he's just recommending the language that, um, uh, within a historic district should be concealed within or behind existing architectural features or should be located so that they are not visible. I believe that was the only language that he was recommending.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, yeah, good point.
And, um.
And this, and what about his first point, though? Should preserve the character and appearance of the structure?
Oh, or, yeah, that, yeah, right. So the sentence before.
Yeah, the two sentences. I mean, are the two sentences okay, David? From what your, uh, your experience, they look pretty innocuous to me.
Well, I, well, I guess what, what we're, what you're doing here is presuming to regulate the historic building in a historic district without having fully evaluated how the historic people regulate historic buildings and historic districts.
But it doesn't preclude them from doing so. Right. Doesn't supersede their ability to do it. It's just another layer. We haven't said they can't. We just said, we're going to emphasize this.
The que- the question here is, do you want two boards looking at this? So if an alteration is proposed in a historic district and it's going to be visible from a public way, then the Historic District Commission has jurisdiction and is going to have to approve it.
Well, except, wait a second, this goes a little further than the Historic District. And what this would do, I would imagine, is because you guys like the hypotheticals out, is the Z B A would say, hey, this is a, a building that even though it's not in the Historic District and it's not on the federal register, it is eligible to be on the federal register. And we'd be a lot more comfortable if we got an opinion from the Historic District Commission that the proposal is consistent with the architectural, uh, uh, quality of this building.
I, I should have been, I should have been clearer, Jim. I was commenting on the second sentence because we'd moved on to that. Um, and we, I'm happy to go back to the first sentence. But my point there is very specific. Do we want two boards having jurisdiction over the same issue? That sometimes there are zoning bylaws that put wetlands type issues, uh, in front of, let's say, a zoning board or a planning board, and you have the conservation commission ruling one way and a zoning board ruling another way. So my point.
Happens all the time. There's building code, there's a zoning code, there's historic district, there's conservation commission, there's environmental, uh, conservation regulations. It happens all the time.
Jim, I'm, I'm not, I'm not talking about, I'm not talking about concurrent jurisdiction of two different boards. I'm talking about two different boards having jurisdiction over the exact same issue, which is has to do with the, in a historic district, uh, how, uh, you know, how the visibility, how, um, how a board is going to rule on it. You really want a historic.
Our historic, our historic district commission, and I believe Jason's still a member of it, um, if not the chairman, only has jurisdiction in the historic district, but there could be eligible buildings, which this refers to, that are outside the historic district, and so they wouldn't have jurisdiction on it.
Right, Jim.
There could be eligible, wait a second, and there could be eligible buildings and, um, are eligible, they're eligible to be on the federal register, but they're not. So state and the feds don't have any jurisdiction over it.
Yes, they do.
And in that case, they wait, no, wait, in that case, the zoning board of appeals would have jurisdiction over it. They would, they would make sure that, uh, should be, the, the antenna would be concealed uh, behind existing architectural features or should be located so they're not visible.
Well, no, that's. Can I clarify a fact just so we can get this off the table? Uh, that phrase about being eligible to be listed on the register is part and parcel of the licensee's obligation under the FCC's obligation under the National Historic Preservation Act. I said policy before. And so it's not new language, it's not special language. It is what the licensee is already obligated to do when it does a shipo review of a new facility.
And who's gonna know to review that? So somebody comes in and proposes it in the town here. Somebody in Washington DC is gonna notice that?
No, 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 no. It has to go through the state historic preservation office. It has to then be notified to local jurisdiction for consultation.
Let's say they don't do that. Who would know?
You would know.
How would we know?
Would they tell us, David? That's what I'm saying. Would they tell us what they did?
They could say, we're supposed to do this, but we didn't.
Okay, if you want to add to application requirement criteria, I don't know if we've put this in here, but if you want them to put in their historic and environmental evaluation that they have to do under federal law, have them submit that as part of the application, then you'll have full disclosure of what they're doing and what the status of what they're doing is.
Maybe we should do that too, but I'd sure like to include these two sentences.
Well, first, the first sentence I can understand. It's, you know, it's an added layer of protection. The second sentence gets to what Joel was talking about with the zoning board and the historic district having, you know, dueling jurisdiction.
Right, thank you. My points were strictly being made to the second sentence, not the first.
Yeah, yeah. And the first sentence, Jim, would cover stuff within the historic district and outside as well, historic structure eligible that's anywhere in town.
Right, but so, and the way I read the second sentence is it's just a little bit more specific about what the first sentence is saying you should do.
But that's only within a historic district.
They're two different things because anything that's going on to a building in the historic district, it's going to trigger the local Historic District Commission application and review. But then this area where there's buildings or neighborhoods that we have that are either eligible for the national, the state or federal register, usually what will happen is if the applicant, like, I think we should make it like, we have been, like, in the past when we, so this is just an example. There was another building in the village, not the Curtis, where Verizon was looking to place an antenna. And they had a historic preservation consultant who was doing all of the research to like talk about the building to do that kind of legwork, and it would have been part of their application.
So I have a question. Can we do what David said and then?
We would have a historical commission, our local historical commission, which is made up of volunteers. They would take another, like, they would review that information. They could also seek out their own consultant and expertise to review the info submitted by the applicant.
Right. It could.
They could.
But they wouldn't necessarily.
They would need to have the, they would need to ask for it and then, yeah, but the town probably.
I'm all for including. Sorry, so I'm all for including the first sentence, but not necessarily the second, just because of what we just been talking about with the historic district commission. So in the historic district.
My sense from talking to Jason earlier was that, and correct me if I'm like wrong, Jason, but you wanted to be sure that applicants were aware of the historic district and that that would be another layer of local review.
That's correct. I think I wouldn't spend a whole lot of time on it. I mean, I just think it's important, both for the Z B A as they're looking at it, but also applicants who are looking that they're crystal clear that there are layers. I don't know that it's necessary. I'm not sure that either one is necessary. I just wanted to make sure that this bylaw expanded maybe a little bit on it. So I wouldn't spend a lot of time on it, but do whatever you want.
So I have a proposed solution. What David said, in the application section, we have seven requirements for things that they have to give us in their application. David, you can look at the bylaw and help me here. In this, we'll ask for, what were the two things you said? Environmental and historical analysis.
Right.
What page is that then?
Well, I'm looking at the PowerPoint right now, eight eighteen ten.
Thirteen and fourteen, that says. Okay, thank you.
Can I make one more comment to the board?
Hang on just a second.
No problem.
We're adding seven.
What are we adding here?
David said environmental. David, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm just looking for the terms of art. I don't recall them exactly. What I do recall is the fact that they have checklists that they use. And then they have a report that backs up the checklist.
So are you, David, are you gonna get text to Gwen to add?
If that's acceptable, I can do that.
Do we make it its own standalone number or do we roll it into number seven?
Well, can I throw out this thought? I'm actually looking at section eight eighteen point seven, which is design criteria.
Okay.
And we could take that first paragraph and make everybody happy by putting the phrase historic district into the first paragraph so that it would read W C F located within a historic district or on or within an historic structure and so on and so forth, should preserve the character and appearance of the structure and so forth. In other words, keep that first sentence. I mean, I'm with David, it's handled elsewhere, but if there's a strong feeling it should be in the bylaw, I don't see any harm in that. But, and then put that in the design criteria.
I don't see where you're talking about though for design. First of all, if you're looking at the written copy of the bylaw, the first item, the new, and we need to look at my final changes too tonight, Tom. I don't know if we can continue this. You know, the first one is about the state, meeting all state, federal and local laws. I moved out of qualitative criteria and I put it in design criteria because I didn't know where else to put it. So that's, that, you know, I need the board to agree to that or not. So where are you saying this historic?
So I think we just go right after that, Pam. We just go right after that.
Oh, the whole sentence.
Yeah, it could be another.
Another point there.
Another numbered paragraph in there.
Oh. Okay, sorry.
So Pam, which one are you talking about now? Because you threw a whole monkey wrench into bylaw.
It's on page ten, Tom.
Is it now number one?
Well, we can put in any number we want.
No, no, what Pam was talking about, the thing she moved.
What's highlighted in red.
That's now number one.
Yes.
Okay. Which came from.
Design criteria, qualitative factors. And I thought it didn't make sense there because qualitative factors are like discussion points. Like, we're gonna discuss this and get to the right solution, and I felt like complying with laws is not negotiable.
Right, yeah.
Then in terms of, if we're talking about putting this new paragraph in here, I think it would make sense to keep what had been paragraph one as number two because it's much broader. Wireless communication facility should not significantly impact view sheds and views from nearby locations shall be architecturally compatible with respect to such views. In other words, it has a broader reach. So I think it kind of makes sense to have that be the second paragraph and then maybe this historic buildings and districts could go in as a third, as a new paragraph.
I agree with that.
Which one's gonna be the first?
The one that's first is first, or first of all, wireless. Second stays second. That becomes three and everything else falls down.
Okay.
I don't think I have the most recent draft. So was that the twenty eighth you said?
Yes.
The one on the website, yeah.
Do we have final wording on the historic?
We're just gonna leave out the second sentence.
David had other text, I think.
Well, yeah, no, it was Joel speaking, saying that we would take the phrase historic district. So if you're looking at the first paragraph, it would read W C F or whatever it might be, located within a historic district or on or within an historic structure eligible. So it just. It adds. Yeah.
Say that again, Joel.
So W C F located within an historic district and then keep the rest of that first paragraph, add the word or.
Or structure.
No, or on or within an historic structure. So it's just putting within an historic district after that second word located and then keeps the rest of that paragraph.
Oh, it's this.
We're not, so who, so if somebody wants to do something in the historic district.
Yeah. They need to go.
The H D C has to give them a certificate of appropriateness, right?
If it's visible from a public way or other public property.
Okay, that's where you got into, you don't want the zoning board regulating that. You want to, yeah, have the H D C own it like they own it for other things.
And interestingly, it's kind of circular because the way Jason wrote it, it can't be visible. So if it's not visible, the H D C doesn't have jurisdiction. But this way, it's treated by putting it in that first paragraph.
Where are we?
It's treating it.
Gwen, can you do the track changes one?
Gwen's not here at the moment.
So what section are we looking at?
Dave, this is on the text that Jason sent us, that historic buildings and district, so that's paragraph.
Let me shrink that, okay.
Right there, the W C F located, blah blah blah.
And I do, I did have a concern. We didn't really get to discussing the second section independently, but about the not visible part. And if you're getting rid of the not visible part, I think that's important. And the reasoning is, is that my experience with historic districts, I put an elevator bump out on a two hundred year old building here in Medfield, and I had to get approval from the Historic District Commission, of course. But it just had to be something that was, preserved the character and appearance of the structure and did not alter or obscure its character defining features, which I think are terms of art. So something could be new. It could be a cupola on a building with antennas inside it. It could be a fake chimney on a building where a fake chimney looks appropriate. So I'd be concerned about simply requiring things to be hidden within existing architectural features.
So this says should preserve the character though.
Right.
And we're not gonna include the second sentence.
So if you're, yeah, so if you're completely getting rid of the second sentence, I think that's.
Yes.
Brilliant, brilliant.
Can you send, I'm sorry, I was talking to Deanna. Can you please send me that?
Yeah, I'll write it. But so then the last one is the resident, is the buffer for the co-location, right?
The last one of Jason's?
Yeah. That goes away. It's this.
And it's going into the.
Going to page ten, I have a three and everything else. But you know, just catching. Okay, so then. We've lost our chair, but the other one I thought was the hundred foot setback on the co-locations of the resident.
Wait, where did Tom go? Oh, can we, can we just take a two minute break?
The bathroom.
Okay.
Get some water. I used it.
I could use a scotch. But whenever.
It's cold, we got off during the meeting and went to the yellow restaurant. All right, I'll go back to. Enjoy yourselves. We're waiting. So with Jim is bringing. The buffer for co-location.
I kind of like that. The only.
Visualizing like, it's co-location and it's already on something.
Right, but right.
Yeah, but just think in New York City, right? You see buildings that have co-location.
Right.
So all he's saying is, you know, yeah, there's also chicken coops. But we said chicken coops need to be a hundred feet away from the next residence.
Yeah.
So why not co-location? It's pretty sad, Oregon.
My, once I read this, my first reaction to that was, well, why don't we just make it same setback as the prevailing zoning that it's gonna be going at? Instead of a hundred feet, whatever, you know, it's in a.
Well, it could be as little as like fifteen feet.
Right.
But, but his point is even in those zones, it would be a hundred feet for chicken. That's Queens.
Yeah, well, those guys up there.
Changing point is in, 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 we'd have to go back into the. We said a hundred feet, and we do that in certain areas that would be a change.
Right.
What insults are we protecting our community from by doing this? I, I know, I look at this and I think existing structures exist where they exist.
Yeah, but they don't have antennas on them. So the question is, can we see an antenna as a, as a, as a chicken coop? And if so, why not apply the same standard to it?
You're assuming that all installations will have visible antennas if they're less than a hundred feet from another residence. And first of all, that might not be true because of tree cover or intervening structures. Second of all, it might not be true because they're gonna put it in a fake cupola.
The only offense that this offers since it's been the building.
I mean, I, I mean, I think that to me, chicken coops are a hundred feet setback because they smell.
Right.
The noise and smell, yeah.
Smell, chickens make a noise and they don't look so good. But I can get roomful of people here listening to a bunch of things that they don't like about antennas.
But, you know, the contents are fixed. They're, and they, you know, arguably don't smell.
You find them less offensive than a chicken.
Pardon me?
You find it less offensive than a chicken coop.
No, I think what happens is that, you know, it's interesting because my, my biggest complaint about this job is that now I can't drive anywhere without looking at a cell tower. And I, you know, I went out to the cave for Thanksgiving and I had to, I just, every cell tower that I could see, I was assessing.
Right.
And, but I think as a general rule, they do fade. Whereas, you know, chicken coops are possibly announcing themselves.
So I have a slightly different way of looking at this.
Okay.
Because I want a bylaw that's defensible, tries to get us some reasonable accommodation for cell phone coverage and some reasonable accommodation for people who don't want access to. That's, that's what I'm trying to do. So, so let me finish.
Yeah.
So. So I think applying a similar standard to self, cell phone and co-located as we would to other things that we do in our bylaw, which among others, Jason knows, are chicken coops.
Yeah.
Is defensible.
Definitely not the same thing.
They are.
Right.
But we apply standards for other things too, two hundred feet for for religious, you know, there's a bunch of other things. We apply these standards that. We apply these standards to things. So what I see is that, I'm still waiting, I'm not finished. What I see is that a hundred feet is defensible because we apply this to all kinds of things. And it will increase, it will make the people who are concerned about having cell phone antennas close to their residents happier.
But to David's point, what are we defending against? What, what are we?
Having a cell phone antenna less than a hundred feet from your ass.
Right, but based on, based on what ground? Because it can't be because of the RF effects that everybody here is complaining about.
No, but so I would say it's because, um, I don't know where to look.
Right.
And everybody could have a different reason for it, as you could have a different reason. We didn't say why chicken coops might be a hundred.
Well, again, it gets back to the intensity of the use. It's a commercial use, and if it's, it's going to be allowed in a residential zone, then we want to control that intensity or limit the intensity, and by using a hundred foot setback, we can, yeah.
I think it's pretty reasonable.
You know, but sometimes they're just little itty bitty things, or they're in a cupola. And that's not got any intensity to it. So now you're putting a, a, a broad, taking a broad brush.
But it's not, but Pam, but Pam, it's not, there's a whole infrastructure that comes with it. You know, there's the, there's power supplies and there's cables and, you know. I, I know. Well, the, 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 the array inside a church on the hill, I don't think there's a generator up there. I don't believe there is, I mean, that's pretty innocuous, that one. Uh, you know, it's not.
Totally can be.
It's not at all like the one at Lennox Fit where there's, you know, 1,400 cables cascading down off a tower sweeping into this big building with the base of it, where then there's a generator outside. So that's, you know. But then the one down, but if it's going to be small, like the one down on West Street, you know, that sits on top of the telephone pole, you'd never, you know, I mean, it's no different than that spotlight up in the corner. And then there's a, there's a box about this big that hangs on the side of the pole, that's it.
Or the one that's down by the tangle line.
That's the one.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
Yeah.
So.
Well, just, I just want to point out too, the one on the utility pole by Tangleline, that came in under a different, like, through the general of bylaw provision that select for acts.
You know, I'm just, I'm talking about the, the scale, the scale.
Yeah.
But I guess what I'm just saying is that I think it's defensible. And I also think it's not that obvious. And I think it will, as I balance between cell phone coverage and keeping people who don't like cell phone coverage happy, I think it's, it may be a way to split the bag. I think it's a pretty reasonable proposal, a hundred feet for, for co-location. Clearly means that in certain areas, you won't be able to do it, doesn't mean in all areas you won't be able to do it. I think based on our heat map of the 150 foot setback, it, it certainly enables coverage throughout. I think it's a good proposal for those reasons, I would like to see it.
Okay, if, if I just, uh, be a.
David, 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 let somebody ask me for your opinion, because you're here to advise us what we need.
Mr. Chairman, is that the way you want this to go?
Well, just, let, let, yeah, go ahead, David.
All right, thanks. I just, you know, I, I've been preaching all along about the unintended consequences of putting in these well-intentioned additional criteria. And I just quickly pop up as an image of two buildings near the center of town. One had a flat roof, one had a roof that could, may have had a cupola on it, maybe a smoke, a, a, a vent stack, but could have a cupola with antennas in it. They're a hundred feet apart, one of them might be residential, one might not. So you look at that and you say, okay, I can't meet the hundred foot setback from that. And by the way, it's a hundred feet from what? Is it the antenna? Is it the antenna enclosure? Is it the equipment on the ground behind the building, which is in a different location than the center of the roof where the antennas are? It just, to me, it, while I, I understand the desire to put some residents at ease with a, uh, what is from a technical standpoint, a, a, a meaningless number. And I say that with all due respect, because the meaninglessness of the number is that distance is not an appropriate proxy for exposure to radio waves. So it is entirely in the minds of the perceiver that distance is some kind of protection. So, so we're putting in this, this clause perhaps for visual reasons. And the result is that we will unintentionally exclude perfectly good buildings for the placement of wireless facilities that potentially no one is going to be able to see. Um, and so I just want you to be sure you're looking at the unintended consequences as you attempt to carve additional opportunities away from the, uh, the review board. Thank you.
I'll also point out that I spoke with Jason, he called me yesterday. And this, just so everyone's clear, his, his, his idea is that co-locations could go on any kind of building, including a residential building, except that they'd have to be this, you know, a certain number of feet, in this case, a hundred feet from any other residential, well, he's saying property, so is it structure, is it lot line, whatever. So he's not, he's not, you know, suggesting we rule out placement on a residential structure with this, in which case it would need to be rewarded. To make that clear.
Okay, so to answer the question of what would be, it's a setback, it's a setback on the property line. What's it to, it's to the object that's regulated.
Right.
So, and then I have a question to you, David. Distance from a source of energy doesn't dissipate its effect? So why are cell towers located far away?
I didn't say that, I said distance is a poor proxy for exposure. And the reason for that is, first of all, antenna pattern. Antennas don't point lots of energy towards the ground. They, they try to throw it out in as even a pattern as possible, so that the farther you away you are from it, the, the better your coverage is, um, compared to if you had an antenna that didn't have a directional pattern, a, a, uh, a vertical gain pattern. So that's one. The second thing is, you're not just talking about the square law rule that says if you double the distance, you have a quarter of the exposure to a given source. You also have other factors like buildings and vegetation. So, and I, I, I did a, I did the engineering for a, a study of the Pavpors radar on Cape Cod. And what they were using was distance from the radar as a proxy for their study. And I said, no, let's use proper engineering methods to evaluate the side lobe emissions of the radar, and we will give you a detailed map of what the exposure in the environment is uh, at every street address on the Cape to that radar. And the epidemiologists were thrilled because they always get this information where the distance from a source is used as a proxy for exposure, and it's a lousy measure of exposure.
Okay, because the more things are getting between you and it, the more it affects that, right? But the closer you get to it, more accurate it is because there's less stuff on you. No. And, and to your point about being on the street, if it's in a residential district and there's two houses and they're a hundred feet apart from each other, you might be on the second floor of your building. So you're not necessarily just on the street. And I haven't heard anything that says that being further away wouldn't make it less exposure. Just being further away with things between you and it would be even less exposure than being potentially closer without anything between you and it. So distance does help, it should not be the only factor, right?
Once you're out, you, once you're in the main lobe of the antenna pattern, that's a fair statement. But the antenna type, the frequency, and the antenna height, all are things that determine where the main lobe first reaches the, uh, the earth.
May I address the board when you, when you have a second?
Go ahead, Jason.
I, I just want to clarify that my, my intention, I, I know you guys are talking about, um, you know, the distances. I, I just want to, I just want to bring it back to the fact that, that the reason why I put it in there was to provide some protection to residential abutters who may not want, so there's quite a bit of our community that is, that is living in close quarters. And to provide some sort of buffer to those people who may not want to look out their window and see a potentially industrial facility right outside of that, whether it's in residential or anywhere else. Um, and the, the rationale doesn't have to be that complicated, it's the same as everything else. How about to avoid detrimental visual impacts and adversely affecting property values? And to preserve privacy of adjoining properties, it's right, it's right in your bylaw that you're proposing. It's eighteen, I'm sorry, eight point eighteen point four A. I, I mean, I don't, I don't think that this is so controversial, we're talking about a hundred feet to give, to give people in their residences some amount of buffer from a, a potential nuisance to them. It's a hun, we're talking about 100 feet. Uh, that's roughly the size of a basketball court. So, you know, and, and let me just say one other thing. You know, I didn't, I didn't look at every single location, but I don't think this, that this, uh, is going to close off that many, uh, locations. But, you know, right now we have five locations, like providing somewhat of a buffer to residential, to, to, to residential, uh, property, yeah, pro, yeah, pro, to residential properties, especially in light of the fact that you're providing a 250 foot buffer from a tower. A hundred feet isn't that much, but it, but it would mean a lot to somebody that doesn't want to look out their window and, and see that.
So, so, all right, so my question is, so you're co-locating on an existing structure? The structure is there. Hmm. So how do you, how do you, setbacks are, okay, you can't put that building there, you have to set it back 20 feet from the property line. You can't put the tower there, you have to set it back 250 feet from the property line. You're going to co-locate an antenna on an existing building?
But only if it's. So what you're setting in the front antenna is a hundred feet back from the property, then if you can't do that, the building's not.
Okay.
Right, it's pretty, it's pretty simple, Jim's, Jim's got it exactly, I mean.
Okay.
Yeah, the building's there, and if you can keep the antenna a hundred feet from property line, co-located on that building, we, we, you know, and you abide by all the other things that we say you need to abide.
Gotcha, I just wanted to make sure.
It's not right.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure I understood.
And it's, you know.
I thought, but to, to, to the other point, you could have a barn that's not a hundred feet from the property line, that might be a perfectly good location for an antenna that, that might be at the back of a property where nobody's going to see it, it's not looming over anybody or anything like that.
Yeah, but it's too nice to the next one.
But if there's nobody living on the next property.
Well, there is a way to acquire something.
Now, if it's in the woods or it's something like that, then, then you know, it might be a perfectly good location. You know, who the hell knows what's going to happen?
So I would say that this idea may exclude a location or two as you described. I think in general, it seems to be a pretty sensible rule.
Yeah, I'm not willing, I think, I'm not opposed to.
Yeah, no, I think the detriment is less than the benefit. I, I, I think it's a good idea. I'd like to, you know, when the time's right, I'd like to add, you know, if we want to make a motion to do that, however long it takes.
Well, I think, I don't think we need a motion, I think just consensus.
No, so.
We just definitely agree where I support it.
Other setback requirement.
For co-location.
For co-locations and in red, in resident, in residential.
Um, this is Joel speaking, I'm sorry.
Go, go ahead, Joel.
I'm sorry, I think I interrupted somebody.
No, no, I don't think so.
Uh, I, I don't have a strong feeling about this, but I wanted to throw out a couple of thoughts, and I guess I look to David, I wonder if there's an unintended consequence of, um, so we talked about co-locations, it, it could include just adding, again, a fairly small innocuous facility on the side of a residential building. And it may be 60 feet from the next building, but would have no visible impact. Uh, and, and the only reason I mentioned it, the main reason I mentioned it is that co-location is often beneficial in that it reduces the need in certain instances from having bigger facilities. And maybe David can talk to that, because maybe, you know, that's certainly not my expertise. But I just wanted to throw out those couple of thoughts, in other words, just looking to make sure there won't be some unintended consequences. Again, I don't have a feeling one way or the other, but just wanted to put that out there.
Well, like, so, whatever, I mean.
Yes, right, right, yes, right.
Always.
There's always a jab to you.
Hey, David, I have a question. When we were working on this small wireless facilities in the right of way, I kind of remember something about saying that any small, what, SWFs and the ROW had to be 50 feet from a residence. Why, why, why is, are, is that requirement, and I don't think that's an unusual requirement. Why is that typically granted, why is that typically in bylaws or bylaws?
Uh, I don't, the, the, the small wireless facility regulations in the public way that I've seen and worked with in other towns don't necessarily have a, a, a distance from residences criterion. Uh, some of the ones that I think are most effective are the ones that prevent utility poles that are straight outside your, you know, living room window, or straight outside your bedroom window, from having a whole bunch of hardware put on them uh, and create, in, in increasing the visual clutter. And that you, you know, to prefer to move those to a pole that's, for instance, closer to, between properties instead of in front of a residence. And a lot of that also depends on the, the density of the residences in, along the beach and hull. Every utility pole's next to a house, so there, there is no choice. But even still, the whole regulations say, well, if you can put one, you know, on the street corner rather than one that's directly in front of a house, uh, we would prefer that, that, that sort of thing. So.
Oh, maybe that's what we were saying, I don't remember.
But that does get back to Joel's comments about unintended consequences, which is echoing what I'm, what I was trying to get across, which is we're not just talking about those big sleds that are 10 feet wide and six feet tall that have eight foot tall panel antennas on them on the roofs of industrial buildings as we drive by them on the interstate highway. We're talking about things that could be, as Joel says, very compact, the size of a basketball. Um, uh, or something that's in a cupola that a building didn't have a cupola before, but now it has a cupola and it looks okay. But inside that cupola are antennas. And if we simply take the exclusion, um, uh, to, to, you know, to do this hundred foot thing from properties that are residential, I popped this up a couple of times, I will just comment on it briefly, I have no idea whether the, one of these buildings is nominally commercial and whether one of these buildings is nominally residential, but let's say one is and one isn't. The center of these two roofs is 107 feet apart, the property line is about halfway between the two buildings. If you converted this, whatever the structure is, let's say it is a cupola, and you made it bigger and a little taller and put antennas inside it, uh, are we saying that we don't want that to happen because the building next door is ostensibly a residential building and the property line is a mere 15 feet from the back of the building?
Yes, that's what we're saying.
So it would be an intended consequence, may, what, may I, let's just ask something here. It, it, I, I'm, I'm, I'm really concerned that this bylaw is not going to pass. And like, legislation, sometimes there has to be some kind of, um, because give and take or compromise or whatever. Does, does the board think that putting this in, suggestion from Mr. Burger would contribute to people feeling more positively about, is it, is it going to make a difference, do you think, in terms of vote?
I would tend to think so. I, I, I think so. And I think also, I mean, I, I share your concern, right? But, but I'll tell you what, it will or it won't pass. And that beyond our control. But what I want to, but I want to feel response, I want to feel that I could responsibly say that I was here, I thought about it, I listened, and I did my best job. And I'm telling you that I think this is a good idea. I think we should include it.
I'm, I'm inclined to agree with you. Um, I, I, I am, I, I do.
And, and I think it'd be easy to, to, to deal with under co-locations because it says, number one, antenna setbacks. Uh, an antenna array attached to any structure that is not a tower shall be set back a hundred feet to the nearest property, you know, blah, blah, blah. Because right now it says, as a example, the setback requirement for the planning directive, which the existing structure is located. So that, that sentence just needs to be reworded.
Can you put that on the screen, Tom, so we?
Uh, so yeah, page seven. I'm just going to grab a drink of water. Co-locations.
Oh, there we are.
I'm not as concerned as you guys are. I am concerned about it. There's a large number of people in town, but it's, it's getting them all down leaving.
Um, can I just jump in here? I, and Gwen, help me out here, but I, I think I have the, a copy with the most recent headlines. And the word non-residential got added that very first sentence.
Where?
Hold on, I'm trying to share this. Uh, am I already sharing it?
No, it's not me.
I, I, I was looking at a prior, um, version that did have non-residential in here and it looks like it was, um, uh, taken back out again, so.
No, but Kate, Kate, Kate's had not residential in a lot of places. And we undid Kate's and put it only, pretty much only in the uh, qualitative and quantitative section.
Right, okay.
So I thought I had the most recent markup, but I guess I don't.
The most recent one is eleven.
It's what we're looking at.
The most recent one is eleven twenty-eight. Yeah, my, mine was dated the twenty-second and it had not been edited, so. So, so that first sentence, we just need to change it, uh, and I'm not so sure how we want to change.
Page around seven?
Uh, eight, uh, seven, yeah, sorry. An antenna array attached to any structure that is not a tower uh, shall be set back at least a hundred, oh, no, shall be set back one hundred feet from the nearest.
Residential lot line?
Residential property line, yeah.
And again, this assumes the structure it's on could be residential.
Or, or we just say, um, set back one hundred feet uh, from the property line for the zoning district in which the existing structure is located.
What?
Wow.
Yes, yeah. Then that covers more than residential zone. Yeah, because.
But wait a minute, it's only residential that's we're concerned about. If it's a, if it's in a commercial zone, can't.
There are, there are residential buildings within the commercial C district.
Can I make one comment to you guys?
Yes.
Uh, I, I think maybe the simplest thing is just make it number four, which is how I put it on that, on that sheet, um, because it, the antenna setbacks, um, or, or you could put it at the end of that sentence because there, there are co-location situations um, that, that don't apply, you know, to the, to the hundred feet. You could just add, add the sentence directly, directly into that, into the paragraph one at, at the end.
Just to be clear, the way Jason wrote it refers to the nearest residential property line. So it's neutral as to zoning district.
Well, is that language a little sloppy? Should it say property line?
Well, yeah, residential property line.
There's no such thing as a residential property.
Yeah, because it.
Says to the nearest residential property.
Property line, says property line.
Property, yeah, but it should.
Oh, oh, yes, you're right, yeah.
So that's why, that's why if we put it in, in, in antenna setbacks where it probably should be, an antenna array attached to any structure that is not a tower shall be set back one hundred feet from the property line in the zoning district in which the existing structure is located. Something to that effect.
Why are you referring to the zoning district?
Just for the property.
So in the C district, every building would have to have a hundred foot setback.
Yeah, the, the antenna would have to have a hundred foot setback, not the building.
That would exclude, nobody's got a hundred foot setback in the C zone?
Well, I just, it, am I open? Yeah, go ahead, go ahead, Dave. I'm sorry, I just did a calculation. Um, a hundred foot radius circle is just about three quarters of an acre. So you need a pop, property that's greater than three quarters of an acre because they're never circular. And the antenna is never going to be in just the right spot to be in the middle of it. Um, so you're talking about an acre or more of property that's necessary to, to meet this criterion in most circumstances. Unless it's a budding residential property line only on one side. Then it's a half an acre.
These are, I think you can co-locate R one. Right, R three. Right. And the commercial down in the flat, problems on that. Maybe a hundred, is a hundred two bid?
I don't think, I don't, I don't think that it is.
Not everywhere in the R fifteen. Because there are some pretty big marshals in the R fifteen.
That's right, yeah, right, right. Just, just right. Does mean probably not the downtown residential.
Right.
Yeah, I, 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 I think, I think I'm okay with it.
I like it. Let's get this bird to fly. And then. Any structure that is not a tower shall be set back one hundred feet.
From the nearest property.
From the property line.
Of any, it should say of any residence.
Well, well.
Well, so that's tricky, Jason, because it could be no residence this year and next year somebody could have a residence there.
Well, you, you could say, uh, residence, you know, you could say residence, uh, you know, at the time of application.
Well, that, that goes without saying. Um, when you build the tower and you're a hundred feet from all residences and somebody builds a residence a year later, that's their problem, not the tower owner's problem.
Okay. Set back a hundred feet from the nearest.
Okay, so.
Nearest property, right?
No matter what.
Right.
Any property line, any property line.
Are you asking or are you?
Yeah, that's my question. So again, in, in the C district, are we going to have any, any possibility of coverage at all?
Well, this also, what about the, what about the, the industrial I district? Because if we say.
If we say the property line contains a residence.
Or nearest, or, yeah, nearest residential property.
Right, does that fly in a commercial district?
Well, so we want, but what, what's?
I think what we're concerned, what, I think what Jason was concerned about, right, is that it's not like it's the multifamily in the higher density neighborhoods that someone might look out one day and see the roof next that they can see from their window. There's a new antenna on the roof. So I wonder if we want to say, don't, I don't know, like, I think there I think in the co-location instances, um, I kind of agree with Joel and David that there are instances where the infrastructure or equipment would be so small and like really easy to tuck in in a group of weeks. Um, but.
You have no, there's, there are no requirements about, like, this, this is the unintended consequences of not, of not having something like this. If, if you don't, the, the whole point, uh, and the reason I put it in was just to provide people in their homes a buffer, like, that, that's it. It doesn't have to be any more complicated than that.
Right, so, but so that's what we're trying to do. So the idea is that we're trying to keep it a hundred feet from the property line of a property that has a residence on it. So how do we say that effectively?
About just like that?
Well, let me throw this out. Go, go ahead.
So Joel, that's what I was just going to ask you. So if we say residential property line and then somebody wants to do that on a building in the commercial C district, they can say, well, it's a commercial property line. It's not a residential property line.
Right, no, I, I think. Right. The phrase residential property line has to be replaced by something like a lot containing a residential structure. But I had this thought to address the potential that the co-located facility is very small. I'm just throwing this out for you to consider, but the way Jason's written it, it says, co-locations shall be subject to the setbacks described below. What if it said something like co-locations to add a structure greater than, I'm going to throw this out, five square feet in size or something like that. And David would have to help out on the, on the dimensional description, but how do you feel about that? In other words, yeah, you don't want somebody to have to look out on a tower, but if they're looking out on something that's you know, a little bit bigger than a breadbasket, as they used to say.
I, I don't, I don't like it because it still is going to let the antenna be right there because those antennas aren't particularly large. And they don't actually particularly bother me, but that's not me I'm worried about.
And then, so what are you calling an antenna? I mean, what if it's a box? What if it's a sphere? Doesn't matter for you?
It doesn't matter to the person who's concerned about the, the, the antenna, um, being there, yes.
Okay.
We just had a room full of people explain to us in some more rationally than others what they were concerned about.
So, so Joel, can you go through that language again? So shall be set back a hundred feet from the nearest property line?
A hundred feet from the, um, from, from the property, from, from the line of any property uh, with a residential structure. I reserve the right to look at that again in writing, but something like that.
It's, it's ten past ten, so.
Is there any way we could continue this and try to wrap it up tomorrow or something, Tom? Because I'm faded.
No, man.
I think we're, I think we're almost done.
I don't think we're, I don't think we're almost done.
Why do you have a list of stuff, Pam?
I think it's done because the stuff that you had highlighted, Pam, I don't think it's very substantial and unless there's a lot of pushback from the members of the board here, it doesn't really change, like, what the bylaw will do. Um, and then. The more we continue, we're just going to get closer and closer to the special town meeting and start.
Okay, because, because I don't like to make unilateral changes.
So I'm just seeing the orange one and a, and a yellow one or something else?
I think let's wrap up. I think, I know everyone's tired, but I think if we wrap up the setback thing and then we can go through yours, Pam, and then I think we'd be good.
Yeah, I, I have one other thing I just want to throw out, uh, because we could, we. Okay. But your point about getting this thing passed? Um, I think we go, and I'm not saying we should do this, but I do think strategically this would help get it passed would be if we excluded Curtis.
Well, that's, that's just what I was going to raise.
This would do this.
Well, that's scary.
I know, it is scary, but.
It wouldn't exclude the Curtis. It wouldn't exclude the Curtis because Jason is saying you can put it on a residential building. It just has to be a hundred feet from anybody else's residence.
Next door neighbor.
That's what his point is.
Yeah, but this is, this is okay, a, a, attorney for our advice us that it is not illegal for us to eliminate designated property as a potential location. So I think we have to discuss it.
I just wonder maybe, like, this is just me thinking out loud. It doesn't seem fair, like, or maybe that's not the, sorry. I wonder though, should it be, could you exclude all subsidized housing? Um.
Right. Might be a more accurate, well, might be the, the same thing as the thousand foot setback for school. You know? The thing is, okay, we do that. And then, and then somebody wants to put one in the cupola here. It's right across the street.
No, I know, so the hundred feet protecting there, but not, like.
Um, but if we do the hundred foot thing, we don't, we don't have to worry about excluding the Curtis.
Uh, no, I think the point that they could locate it on the Curtis and be less than, and be more than a hundred feet, where's our residence with property line within a hundred feet of the Curtis? That's a good question, so.
It does not, I'll just tell you, it doesn't exclude the Curtis.
It might because the building on the corner of Walker and Church is residential.
Yeah.
But that might not be a hundred feet anymore. It might be more than a hundred feet from it. And then you got the bank, you got town hall, you got the library, you got, um, did you actually measure it, Jason? Because you got those buildings along Church Street.
I, I mean, it, it, it does depend on where they, where, where they would.
Yeah, it does, you're right. I think it doesn't, it doesn't specifically exclude the Curtis.
But you couldn't, under this rule, put it on the library? And I don't know if town hall, yeah, or town hall.
Or the bank. Yep. Are you, are you seeing my scratchings on the map?
Yes, we are, yeah.
Okay, so they got a hundred and sixty-seven feet from this random point on Curtis to that back corner. Um, and I don't know if that's residential next door. I don't think it is, right?
Oh, it isn't. I don't think.
It's a library.
But you can, you can exceed a hundred feet there. Whereas being in a cupola of town hall, um,
That, that's too close. Yeah, that's too close.
Ninety feet.
That's ninety?
Give or take.
Yeah. Yeah.
Because it's close to the Curtis. So the question is, do we exclude the Curtis or exclude multifamily, some affordable housing? Or do we not?
I, I just think, I think we, I think we exclude Curtis. I mean, doesn't.
But, but then, but then 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 there's going to end up, we're going to end up with one on Google Town Hall.
Not the hundred foot buffer.
Oh, okay, you're, I'm talking about one.
No, we're not saying no one or the other. It's like, we, we've set the hundred foot buffer. We're talking about the Curtis.
Right.
But you'd have to involve in order to exclude.
Yes, but we've already done the one, so.
Right.
Oh, we are, okay. Yeah, so we're, yeah, it's just, we have to agree on the language.
And, and the Curtis, I just, I agree with Gwen. Which, boy, this is just a strange experience.
Jim and I are dreaming.
Yeah. Um, that I, I'm more comfortable with the idea of, of excluding something like subsidized or affordable housing, but it's so much simpler just to exclude the Curtis.
Well, I mean, the Curtis you know, realistically, I don't think there is any other subsidized or affordable housing method being, you know, desirable, okay?
Well, weren't they just talking about, um, the one way down here?
Turner Terrace.
Turner Terrace.
That subsidized house.
And there's Lennox School House of Curtains over on, um,
Right.
The old Lennox Dale, the old Lennox Dale School. No, 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 that's right, that's not. I think it might have been.
I think Canyon Ranch owned it and then they still, it's like just.
Yeah.
I mean, the, the, we, we sort of added factor that the Curtis has also is, is that it is a historic structure in town. A historic structure in town.
So is the school. The school apartments.
Which is going, it's like called the old Cameron School. There's like a big sign.
So that's that's subsidized housing too, right? Yeah.
I think it's mostly seniors.
Okay.
I'm more comfortable with coming up with an exclusion. Worded that way, except than just. Having a singular exclusion.
Multifamily subsidized house.
So but so did we get into spot zoning then?
I would think we'd be more in more trouble spot zoning with the school didn't hurt us.
I don't think so.
Really?
So Joel, would we be in spot zoning or in trouble if we said exclude multifamily? What is it called? Subsidized housing?
Yeah, I mean, it's a concern anytime you single out individual buildings. I think if uh so I was wondering how many units are in the Curtis? In other words, if you. Define it so narrowly that it's so clearly one building, yeah, it's. Kind of an obvious target, but on the other hand, who's gonna shoot at that target? So um. Is it the the largest um subsidized building in town residential?
It's gotta be, the the school could be close, I suppose, depending on. Side of the apartments.
I mean, so maybe if we came up.
Yeah, it's sort of the same, like, let's let's just, let's take a stab at multifamily subsidized housing and. It gets it gets shut down, it gets shut down.
Well, multifamily subsidized housing with X number of units. I mean, I think. We could get into a problem. There might start being, you know, two or three, four unit buildings.
Yeah, that's we do have, yeah.
So uh uh greater than greater than five and greater than ten units.
Well, I was thinking like twenty. I mean, I don't know, we'd have to, we'd have to look at the potential buildings that are covered. Cause um.
I think Turner is like forty eight units and I think the Curtis is sixty four if you include the family units. And the school is probably in a forty five fifty.
So twenty units?
Yeah, point greater than the exclude subsidized multifamily housing, greater than twenty.
Greater than twenty units or twenty units or greater?
Whatever, whatever works best.
So where do you wanna add? And we're still doing the one hundred foot setback under section under one eighty eighteen point five one.
Um can I ask this question?
Go ahead.
Let's say we're talking about twenty units. What's the public policy or rationale? Behind extending that protection, if you wanna call it that, to only subsidized housing?
Diversity, equity, inclusion. You don't wanna do things to your most, you know, to uh. To, you know, people in affordable housing.
Well, this is benefiting people in affordable housing.
Does it help? Like, I think this would help. Um but um. Under the state indicators for environmental justice, I think we actually have an environmental justice census tract or law. Yeah.
So what does that mean?
Could we just say like there shall be no co-location or citing like in an environmental justice neighborhood?
That's why it's clearly divot.
Yeah, but it's, yeah, it's also, it's also um.
But that can change depending on the end of it.
And it might not be clear enough to people who are concerned about it, that it means hurts.
Right.
It sounds like we're regulating based on environmental effects.
No, well, no, I I think what it's it's economic justice and there was a woman who got up and said, there was a woman who got up and said. When you propose a tower, people with a lot of money hire their lawyers and it doesn't go there. And when you when you. Pro- so it goes where people can't hire lawyers and poor people get subsidized. So I think it directly addresses that concern.
Oh, that's that. I go with that.
All right, well, they're all. They're all good rationales, if you will, so. Glad we had this conversation. Remind me if we get challenged.
Oh, I'm always sorry it's ending. Yes. What am I gonna do?
But I don't, we don't have to nail down.
Hey, Tom, it's it's just, can I just, can I suggest the language to you for the hundred foot setback?
Sure.
I I would suggest, obviously Joel should uh check this for me, but I I would suggest uh. The minimum setback distance to the property line of any property containing a residential dwelling. Shall be setback a minimum of a hundred feet.
I like it.
I can. You want me to read that for you again?
It has to be, it has to be in the context of that first.
Yeah.
Under antenna setbacks.
It's not a tower.
Right.
Not a tower, because you can have colocations on a tower.
Right, an antenna, an antenna array attached to any structure that is not a tower. Blah, blah, blah.
Yeah, this is tower already has a certain set of.
We can co-locate on a tower.
I I I think ours and yours shall be setback um from a hundred feet from the nearest. Property line upon which the residence is located.
That's good.
The nearest residential dwelling. Instead of all the other.
Well, is it, yeah.
So we step back one hundred feet from the property line.
You want me to read, you want me to read mine one more time?
Sure.
Or or um. Or type it up, send it to Gwen.
Yeah, I I it's already typed up. I can just put it right. Uh Gwen, you have your computer right there?
I do.
I am sending it right now.
All right, is that what Jason's doing?
Yeah.
This is David, a couple of observations.
Yeah.
This paragraph refers to an antenna array, not just a single antenna. Um. That's one. So if it's a single antenna, are we are we allowing it?
Oh, would be intended to apply to that as well.
So it would, we would change antenna array to really any antenna.
An antenna or.
Well, the thing the thing is, an antenna array contains antennas. So if you say antenna, it would include an array.
Oh, okay, if scratch array.
Uh the second sentence refers to such a structure and the first sentence is a structure that is not a tower. That's good. So your third sentence might refer to such a structure in the same fashion.
Okay, so an antenna attached to the side of a structure.
No, such is correct. Such refers to the 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 structure that is not a tower in the first sentence. What I'm saying is that in your new sentence, you should use the same structure of the sentence. If you see what I'm saying.
Yikes.
And then my last, my my last thought was, if I may, just to bring us back to ground on this. One of the first things we did is we identified pressure points. And one of the goals of this process was to. Come up with methods to help alleviate. Coverage issues in the pressure points. The center of town is a pressure point. There are no utility poles on the streets to attach antennas to. Is that correct? Um there's.
Yes, we have, we have Cobras.
There's. No way to put a tower pretty very close to this location. Um and. We have come up with something that may pretty well exclude attaching antennas to the rooftops of any of the. Commercial buildings that are uh in in that densely occupied area.
Right, but if but if a tower, if a tower ends up in Kennedy Park up behind water tanks, then that takes care of downtown.
It 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 may provide coverage. Uh there may still be a capacity crunch.
I just think, I just think as. I I just think we have to do this. And I'm not in agreement with this, with what people. Are saying and what their concerns are.
Well, there's there's, I'm somewhere in here, you know, there's people who are way out here and there's people who are way over here.
But and I think that we have. I think we have to address that, you know, and we have, if we if if we sincerely want any chance of this pass. We have to address it and I I.
Yep.
I. Are we adding the language about that multifamily like about?
Yeah, I thought we were.
Do we, right, well, where do we wanna add that?
Where we have what?
The language about excluding.
It almost ought to go on the um the use chart where, you know, like an asterisk and say. You know, buildings.
Well, that's, no, we wanna stay away from footnotes.
Okay, let's maybe come back to that. Quick, that's the other thing that I think we just need a decision on is the thousand foot setback. From schools. And then I think what Pam had also flagged was at her last meeting. Um there was the discussion about whether or not you should have signs. In place um.
And I think we just let that go if we don't have it solved.
Yeah, they didn't send us examples.
This comment, this comment also um. That I've got on this page, I just let it go. It's like so.
There was, there was the sign thing about, you know, posting signs that, you know, this is dangerous, blah, blah, blah.
I I've never said anything like that.
Well, no, that's what that's what they were talking about.
Pam, you sent Tom and I a list of things that we kind of flagged at the last meeting.
Oh, no, Courtney was, yeah, yeah, I don't know.
Yeah, and I'm trying to get us, get us to look at those and either.
Oh, okay.
Add something or just let it say you already, you feel covered in the current language.
Yeah, so if we.
Yeah, there was the thousand foot setback from schools. Signs during the course of a special permit review. And we want to mail notice of balloon test.
Oh, yeah, I got you.
Yeah.
That's a good.
I think that, yeah, the only the only problem with that was there's, in the conversation the last time was. Um the timing. In order to get notices out because during a a public hearing, sometimes there are the those EBA is talking about. You know, all right, well, let's do the balloon test. Let's have a site visit, do the balloon test next week. With not enough time to get letters out. It's all it's all the butters within six hundred feet.
Right, but so it just means you drag the meeting out in over two weeks.
Right, but we also have to be aware of.
Oh.
The shot clock too.
Oh, so.
Drags out the.
So then by the time the thing's in a special hearing, people know about it anyway, they're already notified.
Well, that's kind of what we kind of came around, started around to.
I think that makes sense. We don't need a special notice for balloon tests.
Can you do like a reverse one? For like a code red.
Does that comply with? Does that comply with MGL and all noticing?
Written notice, but you would like.
I think it's pretty defensible to say that. First off, they had to get noticed for the for the public hearing and then if they're interested, they they kept up on the public hearing. They'll know if there's a balloon test and if they're not interested, they won't.
Right.
And at some point, there's an onus of the person to take an interest.
Exactly. That was, yeah, that's what my thinking was coming around there as well. I mean. Come on, you've you've been noticed that this thing is happening in your backyard, you know.
All right, so where are we at?
This democracy is participatory.
Right. So I guess the only question was where we're gonna put that language about.
And the thousand foot setback from schools.
You know. It's not particularly a concern of mine, but it might be that same. Calm the people down that are really concerned about. Exposing their kids. It doesn't look like it pokes that big a hole in the map.
You're talking excluding.
The thousand foot on schools? I mean, I don't know. It's not my issue, but I'm not opposed to it. Might help us get this thing through town, town meeting, it's all.
There's really an honest map, there's really only, because I don't think. Uh schools as they're defined, I think you're, you know, public or private. You know, the. Offers a curriculum, blah, blah, blah. And then a question came up about the Curtis, not the Curtis, Center School, but Center School is eight years, it's not school. So it's got, there's the Montessori and Dale High School for us and then what's this one down?
That's the, it's the uh school for. It's like a troubled kid, so it's not the right.
Oh, is that where that is? Yeah, Gwen, the. The other dot down here.
So nurture institute.
But that's. Somebody said that's not a school.
I thought it's a school on it.
Uh okay, why do you do it again? That's town history.
So technically, they would really only street place. And yeah, it's. The consensus last week was that, yeah, so you know, it's kind of follow. You know, again, it gets back to these arbitrary numbers.
Uh get back to getting this thing through town hall, I mean, through town meeting.
Yeah, right. So what's what's. From school, I'm I'm like, you know, school property laws. Thousand feet. It's ridiculous.
Yeah, but I think there are any playgrounds.
I don't think we need to do playground.
No, no, if we if we just set a thousand feet from any school.
Right.
Not and leave out property law, but that makes the.
Right.
Makes the circle small.
All right, so we're saying school building?
Yeah, and I think that's the language that.
Okay.
Yeah, because then it just means the playground's eight hundred feet.
Someone in here. Language that Courtney had.
I'll move it from the last.
Where do we put it?
Yeah, it's a screen should be.
Yeah, and that's what her language says. No towers within a thousand feet horizontally from any school buildings. Playground and athletic, but we just leave all the rest of that, say.
From school buildings, so we just gotta limit it just to the.
School building. That makes the circle smaller.
Well, where are we putting that?
That's a good question.
Same place we're putting it about. Multifamily.
Yeah, so where.
Well, I mean, we could, we could put it in setbacks.
Yeah.
New towns shall be subjected to setbacks described below. So it could be, um item number three on page nine. Right?
Okay. There's this is all new towers.
That's okay, we we can say, just like law, keep the language the same, the minimum setback distance to the nearest school building shall be a thousand feet. Right?
Yeah.
So so Gwen, the language would be exactly like number one.
Minimum setback. Under new town.
Yeah, number three.
Okay, the minimums, minimum setback distance. To nearest. School building.
Yeah.
Do we have to capitalize school building? Do we have a definition?
Oh, I don't know. I don't think we should define it. To the nearest school building.
Yeah, I think probably okay to got some English teacher.
Yeah.
Definition school.
Okay, so are we doing anything about um? Do we have any language on them? First.
The multi-family, so that's housing, twenty units or greater. Well, so is it only applying to co-location or is it applying to co-location and antennas, towers?
It's co-location.
Okay, so then under co-location.
It will be a rare occurrence where you have that scale of taxing or residential development in, outside of the C, our teenager, our.
So, yeah, yeah, I guess it could be, uh, it should be under co-located.
Alright, so can we do as number?
So I'm, so I'm just wondering, you know how Franny Sorrentino talked about putting something in the, um, cupola in the church in Lenoxdale? Saint, Saint Vincent's, is that right?
Exactly, yeah.
So that would, so that would now be prohibited because it's right next door to residences.
Because it's a hundred feet from the rest, less than a hundred feet from the rest.
So, so don't, so is that.
It's not, yeah, that's the, something you can add. Okay, so what's going on?
What are we saying?
Well, I think that, I think that's excluded anyway, Pam, because of the two hundred fifty.
Yeah, if you look at the setback maps we did earlier in the fall, I think once you got the, like, it got really tight in the Dale.
Yeah.
Once you hit the two fifty.
I'm talking about a co-location though, right?
This, this is co-location.
Okay, so back to number four.
So can you repeat the language?
So, uh, what do we say? Co-locations, uh, co-locations shall not be allowed.
Are not permitted.
Co-locations, um, multi.
Subsidized, well, are we doing subsidized or are we doing this multi?
Subsidize. Multi-family.
Thousand. Greater than twenty units.
So is the first step a subsidized or is it just for?
It's, it's subsidized.
Twenty, I have subsidized to twenty.
Twenty units.
By greater than twenty units.
So if you're twenty, what's that, greater than twenty units?
Shall not be permitted, right?
Yeah.
Someone else. Co-locations shall not be.
But I guess my question is, so then they're about to build that, um, world helping project upon the.
And those.
Yeah.
It's right next to a tower.
But so that would maybe not be subsidized, that would just be affordable.
That's affordable.
Yeah.
Some of the units.
Would be subsidized.
Right, because they're going to be.
Yeah, because they're gonna have.
Income, so I think they'll have some market rate units, but they're also going to have.
No, but just because it's affordable doesn't mean it's subsidized, but they will have some subsidies.
I think we could.
That's fine, so just subs, I'm just trying to talk.
Smart to talk about that. I, I think that they, you know, sort of justice.
Economic justice, yeah.
You know, that, that using the subsidized gives us the tool.
Yeah.
To argue that those who could not go out and hire the alternative are protected.
Right, so now I'm being called?
I think so.
Yeah, that's just run through, you know, so many.
I think the most, well, wait a minute, wait a minute, Gwen's got some language that Pam that's want to make sure we don't leave something out.
Yeah, so if you go to page six. Page six, uh, yeah, um, Pam had added something. The under the third preference in the table.
Well, wait, also look at, I'm sorry, under there, um, under, I had to like add this. Can you click on my comment so I can see what is, what it's referring to? Yeah. So just so I get this right, first preference, concealed co-location on a non-residential structure. Second preference, camouflage co-location on a non-residential structure. Third preference, blah, 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 on a non-residential structure. Fourth preference, I think it should be substantial.
What was there before?
Uh-huh, I don't know, I'm so confused.
Doesn't this just mean that our.
It was there before.
Okay, so just leave it, so it's okay.
Substantial change to existing base station or tower. Yeah, it was there last week.
I'm going to delete the comment.
Okay, um, what about the fourth, what about the fourth pre- preference, um?
Well, that's.
Should that say, should that say like non-residential somewhere in there?
Natural change going to existing base station or tower. New camouflage or concealed tower, no.
That's clearly just about towers.
Yeah.
No, it says base station is a co-location.
No, because I think a substantial change isn't to the, isn't that an eligible facilities?
That's, it's not an eligible facilities request.
A co-location can undergo a substantial change, so do I have to put non-resi, on a non-residential structure in that one?
Well, if, if there's an existing base station, it's, it's already uh, it's already been approved for having wireless facilities on it.
Right.
Okay, so that's fine, and the rest of it's fine.
So then, so then the paragraph below the table says the same thing twice. And Jim, Jim had talked about it earlier in the meeting.
Evening.
I didn't understand what he was saying. I think it's clear, I think it's fine.
In addition to the foregoing, if any new tower or any co-location on a residential structure is approved, the applicant must demonstrate that it is not feasible or effective to locate their facility on an existing tower or non-residential structure. The if, the if should say before, because.
Say what?
The if should say before, because by the time it's approved, you can't review it anymore. Right. Before any new tower or co-location on residential structure is approved, the application must demonstrate that it's not feasible or effective. Not if.
Yeah, or you maybe would have to say if any new tower is to, is to be approved.
Yes.
You could stick in B.
Oh, I'm sorry, I, I, I'm like, yeah, I understand, so fix it.
Then, but then, but then the second sentence says the same thing. Before a new tower is proposed in the residential district, the applicant must also demonstrate that it is not feasible or effective to locate the facility in other districts or municipal. Well, it used to say facility, but now it's a location.
The first is about towers and structures. Towers and co-locations, the second one is about zoning.
Oh, new, new tower, okay, okay, gotcha.
Should be, should they just be?
So how do you want to rewrite that first one?
The if just changes before, that's done.
Okay, so before.
Before any.
Yeah.
So get rid of in addition to.
Yeah.
Now, why, why? So Pam, what was the reason behind changing facilities to location?
Bottom of that page.
Because we said, because I didn't like, because I used the word facility as a, or, or, it, it, that's wireless communications facility with a capital F. It said municipal facility at the end of the sentence, so I changed the word facility to location.
It was, um, same word, meaning two different things.
Yeah, yeah.
And we use location, municipal location higher up.
Okay, okay.
Alright.
Can you put a word, the, on, uh, or on, um, or on, I, I can't even talk anymore, I'm so tired. On, uh, municipal location or, you know, put the A in there, article.
Okay, and then on eight, so on page seven.
Wait, are you gonna fix this one while we're in here or not?
Excellent, yeah. I'll send it out to everyone to look at in the morning when you're.
Oh, man, I, and you got the whole before thing, right? You got the notes?
Yep, we got that. And then, so now we're looking at eight point eighteen point five two. You had highlighted notwithstanding this provision, the height of the antenna shall not extend.
Oh, I would just skip it. I don't, I, I don't know. I didn't know what I.
You had asked if this needs to exclude power. And should it also exclude extension and pole extensions and?
Yeah. You know, I think that the, that the notwithstanding this provision, the height of the antenna clearly refers back to the first sentence, so we're okay. We're talking about attached antennas. You know.
Okay.
Above the structure other than a tower.
Yeah.
It would ask, sorry, but I can't remember where did we, uh, have the school buildings.
Where the hell is?
Okay.
There is, page eight, what's actually page nine? Minimum setback distance to the nearest school building.
We have to define school building.
And then on page ten, we have number one, that's highlighted in red, that's new from qualitative preferences.
Yeah, I just moved that down from qualitative to here. I hope that's okay with everybody, even though it does talk about the operations. Is this an okay place for it?
Seem to make sense.
Yeah, it'll get covered. And then Susan and I changed some stuff. Susan had some, some suggestions, so the including but not limited to was something we changed. We fixed language.
Hey.
Okay, I think that's everything, guys.
Um, I do, I do have something at the very tip top under, um.
Uh, Pam.
No, no, I just, it's really quick, if we can get up there.
At what page?
Like number one. Number two.
And after this, please don't mess with it anymore.
I know, I'm done, um.
Pam, very careful review of the.
You're not allowed to read it.
I'm not reading it tomorrow, Gwen, I am not. Number four, do we want to say existing non-residential? Do we, are we encouraging the place to wireless?
What page?
On to, under purpose.
You want to say non-residential here or not? I, I only put the non-residential, um, you know, emphasis in the, I think.
Four, under number four, where we say encourage deployment of wireless.
Their minimizer. Well, she was wondering if we should say non-residential. Well, this gets back to that thing that Kate had, because anywhere she had, there was existing structure, she put in existing.
Right, and I stripped that out, I took that out, and we only have it in the qualitative and quantitative area now. Um, but do you want to put it right up here in purposes for emphasis or not?
Yeah, I think, I think we should put it back in.
In this one location.
Encourage deployment, yeah, because that's what we want to do, encourage the non-residential.
Yeah, so put non-residential in there. Yeah, that's it, and that's it for me. Hands off, look.
Pencils down.
Down, I make a motion.
Now, okay, so do we? We don't have to make any motion on the bio lock. You know, we all, no, because.
Well, let's make a motion to.
We've all, we may be.
Make these revisions.
Yeah.
I'd make a motion to adjourn the meeting and go home and see if we're all still married.
My wife's dead. She's with a bed a while ago.
Nobody seconded the motion.
I second that motion.
To end the meeting and go home and see if we're still married.
I'm sorry, I, I could get fired here for jumping in, but what happens next?
So, so next, I think, so Gwen's gonna polish it up and send it back all around to us, and then I think, that's it, where I think we're done. We've agreed to the language changes, where's it gonna go, how's it gonna be worded?
It's going to town hall.
It's going, going to the meeting. It's going to town meetings.
Okay. Um, okay, I, um, let me know how you feel about this. I would like to be able to look at how the wording ended up over, uh, you know, the exclusion of subsidized, affordable housing, whatever it was, over twenty units.
Yeah.
I wanna, if I can, I don't know if I, obviously I don't want to violate the open meeting law and send it around to everybody, but should I send it to the chair? Should I send it to Pam? But I may, if, if I have any concerns.
Yeah, so, yeah, so Gwen, why don't you just work with Gwen on it?
Okay.
Cause you'll, once you have that, you'll have that all ready to send it sometime tomorrow, right? You'll be, you're making all the changes as we're talking, so he can review it and get back here. Okay, so, good night, everybody. Alright.
Thanks, everybody. Thank you.
Hi, one for the record books.
Is there a motion? Was there a vote, Derek?
Yeah, so, so we're all in favor, uh.
Pam, keep her eye.